There is no amount stated in here.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming, and those of you that are watching, we appreciate your involvement or engagement as well. We'll call this meeting to order. And Mr. Kraft, if you would lead us in the invocation and the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
Dear Heavenly Father, thank you, Lord, for all the blessings being given to the town of Oak Island. I'm proud to live here. Tonight, I ask you to give us fresh minds, fresh hearts, so we can do what is best for the people of Oak Island. Give us wisdom when we make our decisions. Most importantly, I ask you to keep us in remembrance of who we are, and by all means, keep us in remembrance of who you are. I pray to you in the name of my Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Kraft. So we'll begin tonight with public hearings. Public one, potential action. The applicant originally requested a continuance to April 9th, which is next week's meeting. We were alerted today that you chose to argue this or hear this tonight. I think there are a couple of council members that have some dismay over that. I know the public has certainly let us hear from them that they weren't alerted in time to attend the meeting. I think there were a couple of snafus along the way. So, Mr. Richardson, this is not on you. It's just the things that kind of came to the surface, but...
Do you want to address that?
Please.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. Grady Richardson, I represent Sun 'n Sand LLC, Mr. Gandhi and his application for the special use permit. So he made the motion to continue as soon as I got retained by Mr. Gandhi and his company and his partners, because I started jury trial Monday for two weeks. And just also, having heard the video from the last meeting, I wanted to make sure that we were in a position to address the three issues that the staff had. In speaking to Madam Clerk a few days ago, it was uncertain, I think, in polling each individual council member whether the continuance would be granted or not. And so at the risk of that, we were going to come down here anyway at that point to argue the motion to continue. But having conferred with my client, we believe we have satisfied fully staff's concerns and the concerns I heard from council at the last meeting, which is why, since I'm already here and they're here as well, and we didn't know whether or not the motion to continue would be granted, that's when I let everyone know just as soon as I could that we were withdrawing that motion to continue. I did not mean to offend any council member or any member of the public, and certainly am happy to answer any questions that council may have for me or for my client regarding that.
Thank you for sharing that. Appreciate you. Counsel?
Madam Chair, we were asked, council was asked last week if we would consider postponing this until April. We were informed on Thursday at our agenda review meeting that indeed it was being postponed, and that's reflected on the front page of the agenda. That agenda was released to the public probably, I suspect, on Friday. And now today, at midday, we get a notice that this is going to go forward tonight. I object to it going forward. I think the optics are bad for the public. There are potentially people here who might want to speak about this and do not have an opportunity because they were under the assumption that it was going to be moved to April. Further, I object to the fact that I just received this revised package at five minutes till six. So I've not had time to look at it or be prepared for it, so I'll state my objection to it going forward.
I would like to echo that. The information we were given last month was insufficient, missing an awful lot of information. And we made a lot of requests, and there may be good information in here, and it may have addressed the questions that we had, but to put this in front of us five minutes before the meeting starts is unacceptable, unacceptable. And I too object to moving forward in this hearing.
Anyone else that wants to speak?
Well, I think the procedure is irregular and does not serve your client, sir, or this board's best interests. I would support a continuance, which I did originally, continue to support that so that you're fully prepared. We have an opportunity to look at the changes that you've made. That seems sensible to me.
Can I address the optics issue as well? I mean, listen, I never even would have come down in the car if I knew that there had been a continuance granted based on an early release of a workshop agenda. It doesn't make any sense, and I'm happy to forward to all of you the email threads showing my efforts to ascertain whether or not the continuance had been granted. The first I'm hearing and my clients about there being a workshop agenda that said the continuance had been granted was about two minutes ago. So we are not trying to hoodwink the public or council or agitate anyone. I certainly did not want to get in my car, nor did they want to come from Raleigh and Cary and come here tonight if we had known that a continuance is going to be granted. And I don't want that being held against my client as somehow we knew it was going to be continued, but yet we withdrew the motion to continue. And I'm certain that Madam Clerk can verify the fact that I have been trying doggedly and copying emails to her, Mr. Eads, Mr. Kirkland, trying to ascertain the status of the motion to continue. As of the last conversation I had with Ms. Stites, she polled everyone, and it was a three to two, so it wasn't a certainty that it was going to be granted.
In no way does this imply that... I think we're both in a difficult position, and it's also unfair to the public. So we're all in a difficult position, Mr. Richardson. I just, there's no implication that this was intentional or in any way other than where we are right now in terms of a situation which is irregular and unfortunate. I've not, nor have my colleagues, had time to even compose intelligent questions based on what you've put in front of us, which puts us in a very difficult position as well.
I have a question for Mr. Eads. Last hearing in February, in looking at the video, I'm at a little bit of a disadvantage. I don't know if anyone even signed up to speak with respect to this application in opposition for it outside of the applicant and the applicant's representatives. And so if no one was there at that meeting to speak in opposition, I don't know how the public's being dis served by tonight going forward. I'm just asking the question.
Madam Clerk, do you recall if people signed up last month?
I brought that list with me just in case, and the only person that signed up was the architect that spoke.
I mean, so where was the outcry from the public then? I understand, I guess my position would be, listen, the public was, had an opportunity to sign up. No one signed up to be heard in February. Staff gave its report. It was tendered into the record as Exhibit A, and Mr. Murphy got up as the architect for the applicant, and that's when he was fielding questions from council about harmony and then fielding questions about the incomplete nature of the application with respect to landscaping, lighting, and the building facade. And so I guess we're prepared to move forward tonight. I don't see the evidence that suggests the public's been dis served by this because they had their opportunity in February, but I'm here at the pleasure of council. We really are trying to move this to a conclusion. We feel like we've really addressed the deficiencies that were noted in February.
Mr. Richardson, if I may ask you?
Yes, sir.
If we were to see you for the first time tonight, or we were to see you for the first time in April, when would we, for the first time, see this rendering?
Well, it's a quasi-judicial setting, so we had provided that to...
May I weigh in on that? As you may recall, as we always do on the quasi-judicial hearings, we talk about being fair, unbiased, open-minded, no financial conflict of interest, et cetera, et cetera, and basing your vote solely on the evidence that's adduced at the hearing, not material you read outside or people you, conversations you may have had outside the hearing. At the beginning, before we started or convened this council meeting, Mr. Richardson, and I'll let you speak for yourself if I say this wrong, asked if he could go ahead and place these in front of everybody's seats, just to speed up the process. So that's what happened, but this is not something that would be, unless it was prepared by staff in their staff report that was submitted with the original application, this is not something you would be looking at until the hearing itself anyway. Does that make sense? Does anyone...
That's what my question was.
No, it doesn't make sense, because in our February agenda packet, we had the full set of drawings, and I spent considerable time going through those and had considerable questions for the applicant, and I've not had a chance to do it for these.
Any, the applicant's entitled to put on any additional evidence during the hearing. And I don't recall, and Matt, maybe you can weigh in on this, when, if those were the drawings that were originally submitted with the S U P application, that's generally how it goes. But in a quasi-judicial hearing, the evidence comes in, other than the agenda packet itself, as the witnesses put on evidence, testify. And you would be within your purview if we go forward tonight or it's continued or whatever, if you need additional time to consider the evidence individually, not collectively. Or if you wanted to consider it collectively, then it would have to be in an open session like this, then that would be your prerogative. But this is not something, if it wasn't submitted initially with the S U P application, that you would get until the evidence is put on.
And that was another concern I heard on the video, was the smallness of the font and not being able to see some of the very small, because some of you have eyesight like mine, maybe not quite as bad as mine. But the other point of bringing these 11 by 17s is to kind of magnify the font for ease of reference while Mr. Murphy would get up here and talk to you about the technical specs that are shown on those drawings. In large part, this 11 by 17 is a supplement to what you've already seen, addressing specifically the lighting, the building facade, kind of giving you a rendering of the front rear sides, landscaping as well, and giving you some of the specifications of the lighting that's been proposed under the U D O and as well as the landscape requirements under the U D O. The rest of it is, and if I'm misspeaking, Mr. Murphy, tell me, but I don't believe any of the technical specs that you reviewed back in February have changed one bit.
And as such, that this is additional information, I would appreciate the respect to be given the time to thoroughly review it.
Well, I don't even know if I'm allowed to leave the information with you, given the quasi-judicial setting. Mr. Eads and I are constrained as to ex parte types of stuff at a quasi-judicial. If someone had sent you an email speaking out about tonight's application, that's ex parte, and it's improper to be considered because it's a quasi-judicial setting, and everything's supposed to be on the record, including the material I've handed out, that I handed out in anticipation of speeding up the process, that I would identify as an additional exhibit in the record and go through it tonight, so that the opportunity for questioning and cross-examination or direct examination can be had all contemporaneously on the record.
The only communication that I have had with anyone from the public is the regret, is a safe word, that they couldn't, they didn't plan to be here tonight, not necessarily to speak, but to participate in a public forum regarding this project. So there was no expression of, you know, it's a good project, it's a bad project. It was simply their dismay that they were unable to be here based on information they'd received previously, just for clarification.
I think my legal position would be, and my argument would be, and you can obviously consult with Mr. Eads, but given that the last hearing, no one's signed up to speak in opposition to it, whether it's held tonight, or it's held on April 9th, or it's held in May, or whenever, the record is closed in terms of someone being able to stand up and sign in and oppose the project at this point. Otherwise, the record continues on and will never end. I mean, if it comes in April 9th and people come in with legions of folks, then they had the chance to sign up at the hearing. This was a recessed hearing to tonight.
Mr. Eads, a question, if I could.
Yes, sir.
So last month's agenda packet, which we received approximately four calendar days prior to our meeting, we had a lot of sketches, all the drawings, everything was in here. And supplemental, we found this, we got this five minutes before the meeting started.
Right.
Is there not an expectation we should have, that we should have additional lead time, that we can absorb and review the information that's in here, jot down any additional questions, be prepared for this meeting?
If it was, if the applicant would have included that in its, is it a it or he or she?
It's it.
It's a corporate entity, that's right. In its, included these renditions like this in its application, and it was in the staff report, then you would get that when the agenda's put out. If Mr. Richardson had not handed this out before the meeting, when he goes to put on his evidence, he could have handed it out at that point. But on a quasi-judicial hearing, you can base it on the evidence. So I have seen, and this is no offense to the applicant, more voluminous applications, if you will, that do have color renditions like this, and I've seen them less voluminous than the application that was submitted in this case. But with a quasi-judicial hearing, since the applicant has the burden of proof, in this case, it must bring forth evidence that tends to show that it meets the criteria found in our Code of Ordinances. I think what's thrown all of this off tonight is, no good deed goes unpunished. I understand why you wanted to hand it out early, was that it's now in front of you, but if we were to proceed, and he would hand it out as he's calling witnesses, which we've done in prior S U Ps, that's generally how it works. Does that answer your question?
Yes, that answers my question. Okay.
Just to add to that quickly, I remind counsel that in a quasi-judicial hearing, even if you get the information a few days prior to the hearing, you are not allowed to ask questions in those meetings. You're not allowed to contact the public. You're not allowed to share your packet with the public, nor are you allowed to do a site visit based on the information in your packet. If any of you did that, you answered falsely in last month when the questions were asked whether or not you had any prior knowledge to what was going on here. So I just want to remind counsel that you're trying to make the argument that information wasn't available, but information can't be socialized until the hearing is opened and evidence is presented.
Appreciate it.
Yeah, that was not my question, Councilman Martin. My question was simply, I did not have this information until five minutes before the meeting started. It has nothing to do with me socializing on social media, talking to anybody in the town of Oak Island about this. It was simply for my review and for my edification, so I could put together substantive questions, just like we did last month.
Well, and I think what Mr. Eads has explained is, last month, this document could have made an appearance as the hearing was open. This document didn't have to be in our agenda packet last month, because the applicant can present this at the public hearing as evidence. And we do that frequently, where we accept additional material, and it goes in to the record, and Mr. Eads can verify this, where we accept additional information at the time of the hearing that is not in our packet. We've done that for many, 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 many years. So I would understand if this information caused a complete redesign of the property from what we've already witnessed at the previous hearing, but in my opinion, the building hasn't changed, its footprint hasn't changed, the layout hasn't changed, the dimensions on the property hasn't changed. They're simply providing new evidence specifically directed to the three topics we discussed last month, which is, what is the architecture, what is the vegetation, and what is the lighting? And I think what's being presented in front of us now is an attempt to show us that rendering. So my opinion would be, we move forward with the public hearing on this topic.
I want to cut to the chase the best I can. I truly came here respectfully, sir, with no opinion whatsoever. To truly conduct a quasi-judicial hearing, I really could not tell you right now how I'm going to vote, because I haven't heard the information, I haven't heard the give and take. But it seems like our two issues are, we only got the rendering five minutes before, but it's clear, we could have got the rendering 10 minutes after Mr. Richardson started his speech. So he didn't have to give it to us five minutes earlier, he could have given it to us halfway through. So if that's the case, we need to consider that. The second thing is, if no one else had signed up to speak a month ago, who are we leaving out? Sooner or later, these people are going to have their day, and we're going to hear what they have to say, and postponing it in February, and January, and December, and March, and April. Sooner or later, they're going to have their say, and I don't have a reason not to say tonight at this moment. I can agree with you, Mr. Martin.
Mr. Box?
You know, assuming the best possible case, no pun intended, counselor, there was a misunderstanding here, which has caused this consternation, and I see no reason why we can't postpone this one more time. The applicant postponed several times. This application was filed in September. You asked for a continuance. You had every reason to believe it was going to be granted. I had that perception belief, too. And so this wrangling can all be avoided, you can take back your evidence, and you can introduce whatever you like at the next evidentiary hearing. I think that would be a better course of action for us.
What if, one of the, one if not two of the continuances were due to inclement weather, not by the applicant, so for the record. What if, may I make a proposal, Mr. Eads, to counsel?
Can I just, I want to clarify the minutes, because this is important. I understand, no one's contacted me, but I understand there's some public concern about whether this hearing is going to go forward tonight or whenever. At last month's meeting, the hearing was recessed and continued until this month. In the interim, Mr. Richardson did communicate with staff and copy me that he had been retained by the applicant and requested a continuance. It's my understanding, was it Friday, Ms. Stites? We never, there was never a formal vote, because there's not been a public meeting since that time. But the school of government does acknowledge that you can poll the board and say something, not on a quasi-judicial hearing itself, but procedurally, the applicants, in this case, this case as the example, the applicants retain counsel, they've requested a continuance, and Ms. Stites, you polled the board regarding that request.
Yes, sir.
And there was a three to vote, or three to indication, correct?
Yes, sir.
That it would be continued.
Yes, sir.
And you conveyed that to Mr. Richardson.
I did.
And I think, as Mr. Richardson said, and I don't want to put words in his mouth, since that's not a solid...
We give them a continuance. Now they do.
Since that's not an unequivocal yes, you prepared your case and brought your witnesses.
Correct.
So, and then the agenda was published, what date, Ms. Stites?
Agenda was published, I'd have to look, I don't remember if I did it Thursday or Friday, but it says on the agenda that the applicant has requested a continuance of the hearing until April 9th.
Right.
So it didn't say that it was continued. It said the applicant requested a continuance.
So if there's a procedural deficiency there, it's what do we do? And this is something we can talk about as a policy going forward. It's certainly not my prerogative to unilaterally say, yes, your continuance request is granted or not granted. You did poll the board, you did convey that information. So I don't think either side here has done anything to try to hoodwink the other side, but we are where we are right now. Mr. Richardson, you were going to make a proposal. I would just ask you, would you be inclined to continue this?
So what I was going to suggest, since the hearing has been opened, is I would tender what's been handed out to everyone, these 11 by 17 supplements to the application, because as I understand the record, in February, Exhibit A was the compilation of the staff report and the application materials at that time collectively identified as Exhibit A, and was received into the record without objection by my client. We would tender what you have in front of you as Exhibit B, as a supplement to the application, and as such, if it's received into the record, Madam Mayor, then we would agree to a recess until April 9th. Council members would have the 11 by 17 materials, but I don't want to come back in April 9th and folks that didn't exercise their ability to sign up and oppose back in February, that ship has sailed, would be my position on that. And so April 9th would be looking at the application materials, the supplementation, fielding questions, and me asking questions of my client, maybe of staff as well, of Mr. Kirkland, and to the satisfaction of council that we've satisfied our primatization burden in satisfying the town's U D O to get a special use permit application, and addressing all of your questions regarding the application and the supplement. That would be my proposal, and I've spoken to my, I've conferred with my client, and they're in agreement with that, if council is.
Counsel, what say you?
I want to say Mr. Richardson is meeting us halfway. I think it should be continued. We should have the benefit of the supplemental addition to the material, and we should advertise and hold the quasi-judicial hearing on the 9th. And your stipulation, as I understand it, sir, is no new witnesses are going to be introduced. Is that correct?
That's, that would be my request, and I think that's what the law would require as well.
Well, but what if someone comes forward who has quote-unquote "standing"?
They didn't sign up back in February.
You're excluding them, is what you're saying.
I'm excluding them because the law says I can, yes.
Oh, all right.
Well, no, I mean, at the end of the day, we had a duly noticed hearing February 13th, and no one signed up in opposition to it. You just heard from Madam Clerk say that. The only folks that signed up and offered to speak regarding the application was the applicant's architect. And so it is clear, in my estimation, and I'm giving this from three perspectives. I'm the town attorney for two towns. I deal with this all the time as well, and I represent developers and I oppose developers. So I'm quite certain or confident in my position on this, that folks that had the opportunity to sign up to speak in opposition to it chose not to do so. And so it's, from a due process and a fairness perspective, I believe that that opportunity for someone to come from the public now, standing or not, and sign up in April 9th and come forward with whatever their arguments are in opposition to it, would be patently unfair, and it would be prejudicial to my client to do that.
May I ask, with all due respect, sir, if our council agrees with that, legal determination?
I'm not going to say that I do categorically agree with that. The hearing last month was not closed. Now, I will say, the last time we had a S U P hearing where Mr. Richardson was representing the applicant, he requested that at the recess of the first night of the hearing, and council agreed to that.
And folks had signed up at that first hearing to oppose the project, and we even got their names on the record for the next hearing.
Correct.
So that it wouldn't be expanded at the next hearing.
When you have all your information. Okay, so that sounds like you're concurring. So I don't want to put words in your mouth, Mr. Eads, but if the next door neighbor, for whatever reason, was ill and in the hospital... Mr. Reed, but if the next door neighbor, for whatever reason, was ill and in the hospital, comes forward, she clearly would have standing, correct? Theoretically?
Yes.
But you're saying, because of the procedural hoops that we've jumped through here, they can be excluded because they failed to sign up in February? I just want to clarify what you're saying. That's correct, right?
Yes.
And our council is agreeing with that?
I'm not necessarily categorically agreeing with that. I'd like, and if we're going to continue from tonight, I'd like an opportunity to discuss Mr. Richardson's position, maybe do a little additional research. I'm not aware of a hard and fast law. Now, generally, the school of government puts out publications on how to conduct quasi judicial hearings. It is the custom merry practice to sign up to be heard at a hearing. I think in large part, this may be deferential to the chair on that, but I don't want to make a final, if I'm the arbiter of that, then I would like to take a recess and look at it more closely. I do know that last time, that's what Mr. Richardson proposed, and that was received and agreed to by council. And I certainly agree that you can't get a second bite of the apple after an evidentiary hearing is closed. In other words, not continued, I mean closed.
Correct.
But we're kind of in that in-between area at the moment.
We're in the gray zone, that's why I asked the question I asked.
So, so Mr. Reed, I have a question. The, the first sentence says the applicant has requested a continuance until April 9th, and Madam Clerk has stated that that was not certain, that that was the, they had requested a continuance. So was there going to be a point tonight when this body was going to have the opportunity to vote on whether that was to go forward or not?
Yes, ma'am, that would be the first order of business after the pledge and the invocation and the pledge.
And here we are, 35 minutes later, and we, we haven't even voted on whether the hearing's going to go forward or not. And I would argue that Mr. Richardson's negotiation is out of order because we would vote first without any conditions, it would just be, is it going forward or is it not?
I open that door, Councilwoman, so that's on me.
I, I don't, I feel you, 35 minutes in, and we're, I think the only hiccup there is that the, the request was apparently rescinded, or was rescinded yesterday.
I would like, I, I'm just wondering, Madam Councilwoman, what you would do in my position, when you made a motion to continue, you're trying to ascertain that, you don't get any certainty of it, including whether it's going to be granted or not, and if it's not granted, here we are, trying to put forward an application without being prepared to put on the stuff that you're asking us to see. So we're in this catch 22, and left with that very unenviable position, we elected to withdraw the motion and proceed forward, once I had ascertained that my client had done the things that were noted by council as deficiencies, and staff had noted as deficiencies in February. I took time to get ready for tonight because of that uncertainty. And I don't know what I can do to, to assuage you on what's happened here, but we have been above board, I'm not, I have, I'm happy to litter everyone's inboxes with my request in trying to ascertain the status of this. So please let me know what else I could have done so as not to draw your consternation night.
There's no, there's been no insinuation, certainly not, I'm not insinuating, and none of my colleagues I've heard insinuate that any of this was your fault, and I apologize to you and your, and your clients, who, this was clearly a mistake that was made at the town level. We, as a council, were told last Thursday that it was going to be continued, and that we had a 3-2 vote to continue it. We only learned later in the day today that it was not going to be continued, so that's not your fault. That being said, I, I still am not prepared to be fair about this tonight based on the information, the supplemental information that I've just received.
Madam Clerk, how many folks have signed up for this, for this agenda item?
Well, I'm having trouble reading what Mr. Brookover signed up for, it was not this hearing, thank you.
It's something else.
Thank you, sir. Then that would be just the applicants and associated people with the applicants, there are no citizens that signed up for it.
No. I'm not arguing about any of that, but what I am saying is that if, if the first point of order, first point of business should have been this council voting whether to continue this or not, we would not have had benefit of hearing your negotiation or your proposal. So I suggest that we vote, and we don't, we should not have to consider your proposal about whether people can have standing next time or not if they weren't here in February.
Well, for the record, we withdrew our motion to continue. I don't know of anything that requires us to be involuntarily submitted for a motion to continue, and we've withdrawn it because we went ahead and got ready for tonight's hearing in the absence of certainty that it was going to be continued. And I would object if there's going to be a continuance based upon my motion when I've since withdrawn it. I'm happy to accommodate council in reviewing the 11 by 17, and given more time that you've noted you would like to have, by tendering that 11 by 17 supplementation into the record as Exhibit B, you, and at that point, come April 9th, everyone will have a full opportunity to have digested Exhibit B, along with Exhibit A, and I will appear with my clients and their architect consultant to answer any specific technical questions under the UDO, and any staff questions that I can address as well, and then submit it for decision under the guiding principles for special use permit and the law, and based on the I still say, the meeting was called in February. At the opening of that meeting, there was a sign up sheet, no one signed up to speak in opposition to it. That aspect closed. Here at night two, no one has signed up in opposition to it. That's another layer of the record closing on opposition. I can just see right now, April 9th, I'm going to come in here like I had to deal with on the boardwalk scenario, and have a room full of people trying to come up and give incompetent, insubstantial evidence opposed to the application that's been pending since, as someone noted, since late fall of last year.
Well, with all, with all due respect, and again, putting the best possible face on it, counsel, not everyone understood the strict and absolute legal definition of having standing, but clearly you heard a public outcry about a hotel. So rather than continue this discussion, I mean, I'm happy to make a motion to put forward continuance to April 9th for this hearing. And you and Mr. Reed, to the extent that you can without engaging in ex parte, can work out what has to be done in terms of the next proceeding, introducing evidence, and excluding any other witnesses, if that's the law. And I'm not a lawyer, so that's the two of you to work out. So I'll make a motion that we continue this hearing to April 9th.
Is there a second?
No second.
All in favor?
I object.
I'd like clarification first on, are we accepting the fact that we will rule out people signing up for the public hearing? Because the way we did it last time is, we had numerous people sign up for the public hearing, and we didn't get through that evening, so we recessed, and when we came back, council's opinion was that we would hear from the remaining people who signed up, and that's what we agreed to. So if we follow that rule, there are no remaining people who signed up from last month's meeting. So are you expecting legal to come to terms with that? I just want to clarify what is in your motion.
I think this situation is very different than the last, factually, in, in terms of people who have signed up to speak, obviously. One, the applicant, applicant's architect, none here. But because this is being recessed, and because Mr. Richardson has made a legal claim, I want our attorney to reveal it and, and tell us whether or not that claim can be absolutely upheld, that even if 45 people come, and they all live on the beach next to them in a tent, they don't have any, they may have standing, but they can't speak. That's what our council said he was going to review. This motion doesn't enter into that, right? Because Mr. Richardson will make the same argument April 9th that he's making tonight, and we'll have an answer from our attorney who has had a chance to review it. I'm simply trying to end this discussion, which is going nowhere, and move this to April 9th, which I think is in the best interest of everybody up here, to calm down and move on with the public business, right? So it doesn't contain any of the legalese, but we did hear our council say he would review the assertion from Mr. Richardson, who has claimed it is absolute law, and perhaps it is, I don't know. I still want to move this hearing to April 9th. Do we still have a second?
A second.
If there's a second, we'll call the vote again. All in favor? Thank you, Mr. Richardson, and Mr. Gandhi, I'm sorry, I don't remember the architect's name, but for traveling all this way, I apologize for however we, whatever role we played in, in this, we are where we are, Mr. Richardson, thank you for your accommodation as well, and we'll see you April 9th.
Just a matter of housekeeping, Madam Mayor, Mr. Richardson, would you like for them to keep what's ultimately going to be marked as Exhibit 2?
Yes.
Okay.
Exhibit B.
Exhibit B, to be consistent with the first Exhibit A.
Right, and then with the understanding that they'll be reviewing it between now and whenever the hearing occurs?
Yes.
Okay. Madam Clerk, I want to make sure the minutes reflect that, and I would just remind the board that you can now look at, excuse me, the council, that you can now look at this, but you must refrain from discussing it amongst yourselves or with third parties, keep it in your possession. This is just like evidence that's produced at a hearing. And I'd also like the minutes to reflect that there is a distinction between tonight's hearing, or this application and the previous application, where we did have, I think it was a couple hours long, it went, there were several people that I believe signed up for that hearing, and then we recessed it due to time constraints. In this particular matter, as I recall from last month's discussion, the hearing was recessed to allow the applicant to bring additional information at a reconvened hearing addressing the concerns that were identified in council's questions and in staff's testimony. Those are two distinct situations.
I wish to be heard on the record, on making sure I preserve for the record something.
Go ahead.
On behalf of the applicant, I want to note my objection to the continuance of this hearing. We have made it clear, we are ready to proceed tonight with our evidence that satisfies the town's UDO, and that there is no one here who signed up in opposition to that. And so therefore, from a fairness perspective, no one should be allowed to speak in opposition to it on April 9th. But nevertheless, you are preventing us from going forward tonight, we have made it clear, we are prepared to go forward to tonight, and if we had proceeded forward tonight, you wouldn't hear from any opponents because no one signed up. So you'd be deciding my client's application on the merits of the Exhibit A, and the Exhibit B, and the testimony tonight. And because we're not being allowed the opportunity to proceed forward, should it come up on April 9th with additional people coming forward, that'll be an additional violation of my client's due process. And I'm just getting it in the record, I don't think this is fair, I don't think it's right, I want it on the record, though.
If I could add one more comment, Mr. Richardson, next time you come into council, please refrain from referring to the citizens of Oak Island as incompetent. I'm deeply, deeply offended by that comment. I was one of the speakers that night, I was at that podium for about 30 minutes. I don't believe I'm incompetent, perhaps I was not qualified, or perhaps I didn't have standing, but to refer to anybody in this room or this community as being incompetent, deeply, deeply offensive.
It offends me, sir, that you would think, let me, let me be heard on this, it offends me that you think that I would call a human being incompetent. The legal standard is whether or not the evidence submitted is competent, substantial, and material. You, sir, can be the most competent artist in the world, but to get up and talk about stormwater, you're not competent on that subject matter, and you know, having heard from the last time, that's what I meant. I would never call someone who's an opponent merely by being an opponent incompetent. That is offensive.
Okay, words matter.
No, the law matters.
Thank you, Mr. Chuah.
All right, may I just note, I'm sorry, I do not have a copy of the exhibit, so if Mr. Kelly has one, okay, thank you. Nope, that's yours. The next are presentations, proclamations, and recognition. The recycling program from Brunswick County. Mr. Kirkland, are you introducing?
There comes somebody, he's coming up.
There we go.
My name is Rebecca Lattin, and I'm the Solid Waste and Recycling Coordinator for Brunswick County. This evening, I'm going to briefly go over some informative recycling information in Brunswick County. In the early 2000s, Brunswick County began its commingled recycling program with 13 drop-off sites, including the seven county parks, four convenience sites, one at the government center, and one at Brunswick County landfill. In July of 2012, Brunswick County began participating in what is called commingled curbside recycling. The program provides residents with one blue 96-gallon rollout cart with a curbside collection every other week. This service was made available to all Brunswick County residents through GFL, the county's Commingle recycling is a system where materials are collected in the same bin instead of having to be sorted by the residents. This is your paper, paper cups, plastic bottles and jugs, metals such as aluminum and steel cans and glasses. Material recycling, or material recovery facilities, MRFs, sort these materials, selling the end product to different markets to use as raw materials. On a side note, plastic bags are recyclable, just not in the single stream, which is what we have. You can recycle bags of any plastic film, like bubble wrap and wrapping that your paper towels and toilet paper come in, but you would do so by returning them to the grocery stores. There's typically a bin marked "plastic" or "plastic bags" in the entryway of these So know your knows. While the list of items that are allowed in the bins is pretty extensive, there are items that, when placed in the bin, can contaminate it entirely. This kind of contamination is a problem for recycling facilities everywhere. It can be costly and time-consuming. Plastic bags, film, such as bubble wrap and newspaper bags, cords and hoses are found to be the most problematic materials. They get tangled in the equipment, which causes the facility's entire system to be shut down. Another big contaminant is food scraps. Food contaminates, contaminates everything it touches. So if there's food in the bin with the recyclables, then it's going to be trashed. In addition to the high cost, recycling facilities also deal with safety issues for their employees. Some facilities have been shut down due to fire caused from batteries and propane tanks. The drop-off recycling listed on this slide, that you may drop off at one of our four convenience sites, or at the Brunswick County landfill, but please note, some of these are accepted at our landfill only. If anybody wanted to take a picture, or, I mean, this is also listed on our county's Hazardous waste. Brunswick County Solid Waste and Recycling Department now hosts hazardous waste events regularly. The HHW events are held at the Brunswick County landfill every third Thursday from The HHW events are held at the Brunswick County landfill every third Thursday from 9:00 to 12:00. And you can bring any of the items shown here on the slide. Listed on this slide is my contact information. If you have any questions, please email me at the email address listed on the slide. Thank you.
If I may, I believe I thought we were going to get a presentation about recycling percentages, data, how much is able to successfully be recycled versus not.
That would be GFL, then.
That's what we thought was coming tonight.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Kelly, can we follow up with GFL? The Parks and Rec Advisory Board presentation will be heard on the 9th, which is what they originally requested, which moves us to adjustment and approval of the agenda. Counsel? Any adjustments to the agenda?
No, Madam Mayor.
We good?
Do we need to add consultation with the town attorney to the closed session?
Uh, yes.
It's just his personnel right now?
Yes.
That would be subsection 5 to the closed session, as well as what's already on the agenda. I'm sorry, it's not 5, it's 6. 6 and 3 are the two that we need, personnel and consultation. So it's adding 3.
Thank you. So we're ready for public comment, or do we need to vote on that?
A motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Don't move.
Second.
All in favor? Thank you very much. Moving on to public comment. Yes, I'm sorry. Andy Spradley?
Good evening. Andy Spradley, 114 Southeast 6th Street, here for the Oak Island Beach Preservation Society. Here's this. Just waiting on my PowerPoint to pop up, and there it is. It's my magic. It is March, and April will be here before we know it. That brings warmer weather, more garage sales, and the annual Oak Island Beach Preservation Silent Auction and Wine Tasting. So we would like you all to please plan to come and bid on some of the wonderful prizes that have been donated by local businesses and our loyal supporters. It will be held at 801 Ocean Events Center, right next to the Oak Island Pier, on April 27th, starting at 2 o'clock, going until 5 p.m. And the tickets are on sale at Grape and Ale. They've been so nice to, and so generous to help us out by doing our ticket sales. You can also get more information by, and look up some of the items that have been donated already on our Facebook page. So please, we would hope to see you all there. One of the things that auction does is gives us the funds to help do things for the island. And one of the things we're doing this year, and we're going to do more of them, is we're putting in one of these shower towers. Now, this town has to put it in for us, and right now, we know it's going to be somewhere on the west side of the island. We don't know exactly where yet. And as soon as we do know when it's being installed, we'll let you all know, and the town will let you know. But we'd like to, you've probably seen this one, this is the one at the Cabana. And they come in so handy to help the kids and adults that come off the beach. And it's another thing that the town offers. Now, before I mentioned our auction fundraiser. Takes a lot of people to put that sort of thing together and do all the other things that Beach Preservation Society does, like flash sweeps, where we clean up the beach, educational presentations. We put together scholarships for some of the kids in the high school, and of course, taking care of our beaches. All this takes time and people. So we would like to have you as some of our people. So please, come join us as a member and a volunteer. We have a tent at the Spring Fling that's coming up March 23rd over in Middleton, from noon to 4 p.m. Please stop by and sign up. We would love to have you. And again, thank you, Town Council, for your time. Madam Mayor, thank you.
Andy, one question.
Yes.
Can you tell us what the purchase price is of the shower towers?
I do not have that. Let me see.
Can you just send it to me when you find out? I'm just curious.
You got it. Be happy to. Thank you.
Bradley, thank you for all that beach preservation does for the community. Wayne Brookover?
Good evening. Wayne Brookover, 127 Northeast 31st Street. I'm, just full disclosure, a member of the Parks Advisory Board. And I'm also volunteering the Ocean and Nature Centers. And ironically, what I'm here to talk about is communication. So I met recently with Carrie Jenewyn, who's one of the new recreation supervisors to the town. And we were talking about our plans for the Ocean and Nature Centers this summer. And I'm going to tell you, she has some fantastic things planned. But the thing that immediately went to my mind was, how are we going to get the word out? Because there is a problem with getting the word out for events and activities in this town because everybody doesn't use Facebook and everybody doesn't use email. There are 360 roughly middle and high school students on this island. We all want to think we're all retirees, but we're not. And she has a lot of activities planned for them, but they don't use Facebook or email. So we have to open up other avenues of communication, not just for the Parks Department, but for everybody. We, Mike Emery, the Communications Director, he should not be proofreading things. I was the principal in an elementary school. Our school district had 200-plus schools, 127,000 students. And one communications director, believe me, he did not proofread what I sent out as a principal. If you're going to hire people to do a job, you need to give them the authority and the flexibility to do what they need to do. And if there's a typo, then it'll come back to them. But, you know, we pay Mike Emery, he does a great job, but that's not really what we want him doing. We want him doing. We need to look at Instagram, Twitter, other social media platforms. And the worst place I've been hacked actually was through the town email system as a member of the Parks Board. And I know at least one of you, and there are other members of the board here who have been hacked through that, too. So it's not a matter of security, but it's really a matter of establishing some different avenues of communication so we can get everybody involved and keep everybody notified of what's going on so they can take advantage of the things that the town has to offer. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Carolina Civalaria?
Hello, I'm Carolina Candelaria, 301 Northeast 42nd Street. Thank you for hearing me tonight. And I just wanted to thank all the folks who came for planting 100 live oak seedlings this past Saturday. The Brunswick Community College Plant Club, Ashlyn Baldwin, and the Professor Dane Fisher, who sponsors them. And the, I want to give a shout out to Hoffman's EcoWorks, who donated the soil for us to plant the plants. And then the Tree Peace Volunteers who came and donated the trees and the pots and all came and helped to pot those. And the town for having the little greenhouse for us to keep the trees there. And the Oak Island Beautification Club, who helps us at the sale. And that's going to be May 4th, when they have the plant sale, when we can sell those trees for donations to help us plant more trees. And also on April, actually on March 26th, or no, when is the Rec Center going to be having a week of Earth Day and Arbor Day? I believe it's... The last week in April, the 22nd through the 26th, right? So on the 26th in the afternoon, we'll have an Arbor Day celebration. And people will be able to come and hear about how the best way to plant their oaks. And, because we found out from the survey, right? We had that Trees Canopy Survey. I'm so grateful for the town to be, have done that. We got it through the grant. And we can get more grants for that, expanding that program. But the trees that we're getting now, they, folks need to know how to plant them, how to take care of them. We need to teach the kids that are coming the value of those trees to help with reforesting the 100 acres that we lost here on the island over the past 10 years with the construction we've had. And then how to plan best to develop the new forest that we have out on the Williamson Track. How to find ways to plan those developments so that we can have the corridors for the wildlife, so we can have the luxury apartments and the affordable condos clustered together and have the wide spaces for our yard. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's all I had signed up. We move to council reports. Mr. Martin, would you like to stop?
Sure. I'll just let you know that I have nothing to report this evening. The February Cape Fear RPO meeting was canceled. And so we will be meeting this upcoming Friday, March 15th. So that'll be the first meeting of the new year for the RPO Board. So I'll be attending that now as a voting member. Thank you very much for your support. So hopefully, next month, I'll have some updates coming out of the transportation planning efforts.
Thank you. Mr. Chulow?
No, I'm just, I'm excited tonight to get an update on where we stand on the enforcement violations. And we gained some clarity and, again, remind the community that we're very serious about enforcing some of these violations that have been hanging out there for many, many months, in some case, many, many years. On the good side, we have some amazing things, as you know, right, going on here. So having attended the, and participated in the libations on Mardi Gras Parade was absolutely, that was received so well. We had friends staying with us. And they were, to say they were agreeing with envy is an understatement. So whether it's the Mardi Gras party, the parade, the Christmas parade, I mean, what a great community we have. And thank you for everybody in the community for participating, for leading the charge and doing some really cool things for us. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you.
I'll go quick. Speaking to the Art Guild, their members have presented a tremendous piece of art to the town. I asked the town manager if there is a place to put that in town chambers, in town hall. And Mr. Kelly's working on that, where we will be able to display work from the Art Guild. Taking that one step further, been talking with Hallie Willis, and we're getting that much closer to getting some of the art of our local artists put up also in town chambers. Last thing I want to bring up, I've been going to many meetings like everyone else. March 23rd, this will probably be the last time you hear me doing an advertisement for them. The Christian Recovery Center is moving into a new building. They are having a grand opening at 10 o'clock, March 23rd. The mayor and Councilwoman Carter and I have gone down there before. I will go that day, on March 23rd at 10 a.m. If anybody wants to ride over with me, let me know. I'll pick you up and I'll take you. It will change your life. That's all I got.
Councilwoman Carter?
Thanks for that reminder. Appreciate that. I just want to say a hearty thanks to our citizens and our staff for participating in the listening sessions that we held a week before last in working on the profile for our town manager search. I'm just grateful that everybody took the time out of their day or evening to come and participate. We also had the Fire Department and Police Department participate just by a hard paper copy since they work different shifts. But my heartfelt thanks. I appreciate your engagement. I hope you will continue to remain engaged. We need to, we need to hear from you, and we need to know that we're doing things that are important to you.
Well, I think we should redo Mardi Gras again. I agree with Council Chulow. Let's do a repeat. Two points of business, the, at the last council meeting, we had a very long, protracted discussion, which is sometimes our style, about the ethics procedure. And the clerk is consolidating that, and we'll have, we'll have that document shortly. We have also, I want to thank my colleagues, developed an entirely new managerial evaluation system. And all have contributed, and the numerous additional suggestions were welcome. And with only a small degree of editorial privilege, I've incorporated the thinking of everyone up here at the dais, and that will be available shortly. And finally, it's been a pleasure to work with Councilman Chulow and Martin on transition. And we are making straight the path of the new manager. He or she are hard at work gathering documents and working with current staff to identify things that will be on the priority list for the next manager. So, thank you. Thank you, gentlemen.
Last but not least, I have been working on collating all of the input from the sessions, and we'll have that for you in April. I shot, tried to shoot for today, tonight, but it's just too many responses to incorporate. And I also want to thank my colleagues, Mr. Kraft and Ms. Carter, for working with me on the search plan. And I also want to thank the transition team. They've done a great job with putting all of that together so these two projects are working in parallel. I want to thank the community for all of their participation as well. And it hopefully will all culminate in finding the next town manager that will be a good fit for Oak Island. So again, we appreciate you and all that you continue to do to bolster us and work on your behalf. So that's my report. From there, we'll move to the consent agenda and approval of the minutes. We have two towns, council sessions, one from December and one from November in terms of minutes. And then there's consideration of advertising delinquent taxes and then consideration of town Oak Island Beach Nourishment Project.
Mayor, if I could note for the record, those minutes are from the December meeting and the January 17th meeting.
I'm sorry, thank you. I see that now.
Yes, and then the delinquent taxes and the resolution.
So...
Motion to approve the consent agenda and the minutes as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Unanimous. Ms. Snipes, would you explain the consideration of advertising delinquent taxes?
Yes, that's just something that the town has to do annually, it's requirement. And so the tax collector compiles a list of all the delinquent taxes that are owed. And so the tax collector compiles a, a list of all the delinquent taxes that are owed. We have to advertise that, and we do that in the State Port Pilot newspaper. The cost of advertising is then split between the, um, property owners that own taxes. So that doesn't actually cost the town anything.
Excellent. Um, and then the consideration of the Town of Oak Island 2425 Beach Nurishment Project, uh, the project resolution.
Lisa was going to get that one for you.
Okay, good, okay. Go ahead.
Yes, thank you. Um, the resolution is required as part of a grant application. The town is, um, applying for $440,000 some thousand dollars, I believe, um, that would be used toward dune planting with the next re-nurishment project.
So you specified minutes. Do we need to also vote on these?
They're included in, um, the consent agenda.
Okay, just wanted to make sure.
Thank you.
Commendations. Appointments to the Board of Adjustments. We have two terms ending in March 2027. One is Mr. Charles Farley and the other is Mr. Reese Simmons.
Point of order, Madam Mayor.
Yes, please.
We have in our policy a term limitation on, um, service to boards. And one of the candidates, Mr. Simmons, has been appointed to four consecutive terms, 12 years. I therefore cannot vote for him. I believe he should not be recommended for a fifth term. I do want to thank him for his service, considerable service, more than a decade. But that notwithstanding, as most of you in the room know, I am a fervent advocate for term limits, beginning with the president and going all the way down to this council or anybody on a board. Two terms, period. So, that said.
Thank you, you beat me to that. Is Mr. Simmons here tonight?
No.
I join you in thanking him for his service.
I would like to just make a comment. We also included, um, with the term limits, that in special circumstances, we could, uh, extend a board member's term beyond two terms. And certainly the Board of Adjustments is one of those boards that, number one, requires an in-depth skill level to be seated on that board to make decisions. Because you do have to follow quasi-judicial hearing laws, plus you have to be well-versed in, uh, property rights and North Carolina statutes and also our own ordinances. We have gone through periods of time with that board where that board has not been able to be seated because it lacked the quorum required to meet. So I'm just suggesting that until we see more applicants who are qualified, um, which I don't see any in our packet for tonight, then it concerns me that we would be losing, not only the chair for that board, but we're losing that skill set from that board. Until such time, more people will step forward who are qualified to serve on that board. So that, that's my only concern.
Uh, point well taken. And certainly a consideration for council in there. You have your ballots, is that correct?
We do, but if I may...
Please.
Madam Mayor, um, yes, we, we included a clause for extraordinary circumstances, exigent need. It was a clause I opposed, by the way. But that withstanding, we have obviously exercised it for 12 years. We've also exercised it through the ABC Board. I don't think we should make a habit out of that because what we're trying to do is cultivate the next generation of leaders and encourage them. So I am hopeful we'll find additional applicants. But per your point, uh, he's already been extended that courtesy twice.
A question, Ms. Snipes. You received at least one application after the cutoff period, correct, for this?
Yes. Excuse me, my voice went out. Yes, that's correct.
Do you recall how many you received?
Just that one.
Just one, okay. Councilman Bach, I agree with you that I would not want to vote for Mr. Simmons and continue another three-year term for him. So perhaps we can, I don't know what the proper process is, is make a motion that we reopen that and vote at the earliest possible time.
Can we, can we get these, this ballot done? So that we see there is an open position. Mr. Kelly, are you collecting these?
Please make sure you sign your ballots at the bottom.
No, I just don't want to put the cart before the horse. The second, um, since they're on the same sheet, the appointments to Parks and Rec Advisory Board. And there are two members who currently sit on the Parks and Rec Board, Thomas Creason and Bill Millard. So when you have all of your votes in place...
Okay, um, I have for Charles Farley, five votes. Reese Simmons, just one vote from Councilmember Martin. I don't know if you want to handle that issue or if you want me to read the rest of the results.
Go ahead.
Okay. For Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, um, four votes from Councilmembers Bach, Carter, Chulo and Kraft for Thomas Creason, and five votes for Bill Millard. Is it Millard or Millard? I never say that right. Which, which way is it? Millard?
Millard.
Millard.
I always mispronounce it.
For five years, I've called my friend Millard. His name is Millard.
I'm not going to remember the next month, but...
I perpetually apologize for mispronouncing his name. Congratulations to those who, uh, who were reappointed. We very much appreciate your service.
Just a point of order, I ask the clerk to confirm that the Board of Adjustment is currently fully functional.
Yes, we have two alternates, so...
Okay, alright. Per your concern, which is...
But when we don't fill a position, then the next month it goes back out.
Well, I would seek, um, direction from council if you want me to re-advertise that position for the April meeting.
I was just going to say if there's a motion on the floor to re-advertise that position.
I would like to make a motion that we re-advertise for the Board of Adjustments.
Second.
All in favor? Unanimous, thank you. With that, we move to administrative reports.
Yes, ma'am. We got Scott going to come up tonight and give you some updates on a few of the projects that are in town.
Just a few quick updates on some projects we've got going on. News 1st, 20th Street Walkover is complete. We still have to do a walkthrough with the engineer, but he has cleared it to open. So tomorrow morning, we'll open it up as soon as I can get some people available to get out there, so it will be open to the public. Next project going on, the pickleball resurfacing and reorganizing has started. They came in Monday, all the material, they've already started work on the tennis court conversion, getting the poles out and resetting new ones. Project should take two to three weeks, weather dependent, as long as we don't get a big spat of rain, should move right on forward. Next project is the 49th, 46th Street ADA drop-off. We're, we're doing that in-house, other than the actual paving of the parking lot. It's our guys doing the grading and building. We've got most of it graded out, should be add, starting to add stone tomorrow. So I foresee, you know, maybe another couple of weeks on that project, depending on when I can get the paving crew in. So that's moving along too. Now, the drop-off, the turnaround, we can do that. All I've got to do is have a driveway inch that's poured, the rest is stolen, so we're doing all that in-house.
Excellent. And can you give us a status on the 9th Street walkover?
That's before you tonight.
Excellent. But we're ready to go, correct?
Yep, yes, ma'am.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Scott.
And on the 46th Street, what that is, we've never had access there before. Used to be just the trees and the street end. So what we've done now is the circle will have a drop-off zone for ADA or whoever needs to use it, they'll be able to drop the person off and then go park in the parking lot and they'll be able to come back and circle and get them. Uh, there'll be a little, uh, concrete area for them to, for the person or whatever materials they have, until they can get back and carry it to the beach. Uh, we are going to have to cut down the dune a little bit for, to put the ramp or the Moby Mat, uh, so that will still need to take place. Uh, and so that will be, what will be provided there. Uh, and then we'll apply it to Kama to put a little shade structure over the sitting area. Uh, couldn't do all that at one time, but we'll be able to do that. Uh, so that'll help it. And the parking lot that he was talking about for the cabana, uh, that's going to be ADA parking as well, and there'll be a sidewalk that leads back to the ramp there at the bathhouse. So that'll all tie in together eventually.
And crossover there?
Yeah, the one that's there now will move about, um, 60 feet east to line up with the walkway coming out of our parking lot.
Excellent.
So that'll happen here soon.
And, um, will the Moby Mat be ready for the season?
Yes. Yeah, everything should be in place before the season gets there.
Excellent. And what's our pinpoint date for that?
Uh, well, if it's, I'd say probably about four more weeks before he gets the stone, and it all depends when the guy can get here to pour the concrete.
So certainly by May 1st.
And the other part, we're working with DOT for the encroachment on the signal light, or not, the bleke light for the crossing. Um, and we submitted the encroachment for that, so that's just more, uh, in-house thing that'll be done out of Shloot, so that's something that's coming.
Excellent. Thank you very much for that report.
And then we have Matt going to provide a few updates.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Town Council. A couple of updates for you guys tonight. First, we had some discussion, uh, last month about the table of use effort that the Planning Board's been working on, uh, and just kind of for a high-level, I think, overview of what they've done so far. First, when we kicked this off, uh, last year, um, we started out by, uh, presenting kind of conceptual models for how you can organize a table of uses. If anybody's ever looked at our table of uses before, it's pretty long. It's got several hundred classifications in there, some of which are very similar. You might have a, a medical office and a dental office and a real estate office and lots of things like that. So we kind of, uh, broached with them the possibility of taking a few different tacts. One, whether we would want to consolidate some of those, like, uses to make the document a little bit simpler and more easy to use. One, to really, uh, simplify it as much as possible, uh, to look at things like how uses are classified in the North Carolina Building Code and other regulatory documents. Uh, and then finally, whether we want to get as granular as possible and try to describe every possible use of land, uh, that could ever exist in the Town of Oak Island. The Planning Board, uh, saw some benefit in trying to, uh, pursue a model of consolidation and simplification, trying to make our document a little bit easier to understand for lay people, uh, try not to have too many conflicting things where maybe the Building Code says this thing and the, the Town Zoning Ordinance says this. So we proceeded with that path. We took several meetings to discuss how to prioritize those discussions. As I mentioned, the, uh, the table has many, many, many listings in it, um, as well as the Planning Board and at Town Council's request, wanted to look at supplemental regulations for these uses. Uh, and also, uh, part of that discussion was if we're going to, uh, change some of these, or consolidate some of these classifications, we have to make sure that they're clearly defined going forward so that we know, uh, when somebody comes in with a use, uh, how it should be classified in our ordinance. And that's really to take the guesswork out of it, um, as much as possible. Uh, so from there, like I said, we, uh, started working on that, uh, took some feedback from, uh, the Planning Board, uh, the public, as well as some, uh, stakeholder groups in the area. And then for the last several months, the Planning Board's been doing the hard work of, uh, not only reviewing the table of uses and potential areas for consolidation, uh, and where those uses might be appropriate, uh, but also, um, review, uh, potential supplemental regulations for those uses, uh, make suggestions, uh, for what that might look like, uh, and, um, how to define those uses going forward. So, um, we've got a, uh, special meeting this Thursday, so the regular meeting is next week. We've got a special meeting this Thursday, um, for what I'm hopeful, uh, will be a wrap on the review portion of that. Um, so that would wrap up, uh, review of supplemental regulations and definitions. We've already, uh, landed and got final comments on, uh, how to organize the table. Um, so what staff would do from there, uh, is, uh, take all that feedback, integrate it into the document, get that, um, that, uh, document ready for them to make a recommendation to Town Council. Um, and so, um, the work's been progressing, uh, pretty, pretty well over the last couple of months, once we dug our heels in. Um, and so, like I said, I know I mentioned to you guys last month, I'm hopeful we'll have something as a, a recommendation made for you for your May meeting. It still seems like we're on track for that as of right now, so. Certainly, uh, I understand it will be a large review for this board, so we'll need to have the board think about how you want to structure that going forward, because it is a, it would be a, a pretty large change to the, to the UDO, so you'll obviously want time to review all that and digest it as well. Any questions or anything on that? Okay. The other thing I was asked to update you guys on, and I've got some handouts here, uh, I'd be happy to give you, um, was on code cases here in the town, code enforcement here in the town. And you may already have these, but I've printed some copies for you in case you want them. David's going to hand these out for me. What David's handing out is, uh, what had been our code case, uh, procedure, uh, for the last several years. If you'll take a, a look, it's, that's the one that just says code case. There's another procedure that says proposed, that is what we're implementing going forward. And the code case procedure, uh, previously, and this, as I mentioned, this has been, uh, a couple predecessors ago for me, since this has been in place. There would essentially be multiple inspections that would be required between steps. So typically you have staff identify as a violation or someone sends us a complaint. Usually, usually the first step is to send a courtesy notice and say, hey, you may be in violation of this ordinance. From there, uh, the next step procedurally is to send a notice of violation, which is an official, you are in violation of this ordinance, come into compliance, or you'll start getting fines. From there, uh, fines are levied, uh, and after a certain, uh, period of non-compliance and with sufficient fining, um, those are then forwarded to the town attorney. If you look at that first code case, um, as you can see, there were several inspections between each step there. That's not totally unusual, uh, in code enforcement. And the reason is, uh, the end goal is compliance, obviously. We want people to comply with the ordinance. Um, you know, we're not out there to write people a bunch of citations, if I can get you into compliance some other way, I'm happy to do it. That being said, it was a long time. So what you'll notice on the proposed schedule, which we're implementing going forward, uh, is much fewer inspection times in between those two things. Uh, we've shrunk it down, uh, about, to about a third of what the previous timeline was, uh, going forward. So, like I said, that, uh, will be a much quicker process, not only to move on from the courtesy notice to the notice of... notice to the notice of violation, but then also from the notice of violation to issue a citation, and then from there forwarding it to the town attorney for legal action. In addition, I was asked to review, as you know, we have several code cases that were intended to be taken forward for legal action. Staff sent you guys a spreadsheet of those cases. So we have several, so going forward, the process we've set up with Brian to get him the information we need is that some of these cases are quite old, so we're in the process of rechecking these cases, getting him fresh evidence that when he gets in front of presumably a judge or a magistrate at some point, that he says, yes, it's, I know this court case, this case was started, you know, in 2021, but here's a photograph showing evidence that it's still in violation of the ordinance. As a part of that effort, we were able to identify several that were, upon inspection anyway, were brought into compliance with the ordinance. So we struck several of those off. Of the remaining cases out there, we forwarded 13 over the past couple of weeks.
Nine.
No, there's nine left. Oh, sorry, I'm counting this wrong, I apologize. Some of those are ones that you had already filed, I apologize. So we've sent a total, I believe, of 13 to Brian for filing, so we've only got a few left out of that 22 that we had that needed to be addressed. We're sending about, staff's goal is to update the case files on four to five of these a week. Staff has other duties as well, so they're going out on new cases, inspections, paperwork, dealing with members of the public. So we're updating these, like I said, weekly, getting Brian the fresh case files, in addition to speeding along our regular code enforcement procedures.
Matt, may I just add on that? As Matt indicated, at least four of the previous noted cases have since come into compliance. Staff is streamlining this process to get me fresh evidence, fresh citations, et cetera. As we already noted, seven have been filed already, which means 15 are remaining. Staff has sent nine, nine new ones. It's our hope to start getting those filed next week. Of the seven that were filed, two that went to the Sheriff's Department were returned again, so we're going to have to figure out, ultimately, if we have to serve those people by publication, we can put it in the newspaper, that that's the ultimate thing to do. So that's where we are on that. You know, ultimately, the goal is to try to get them all filed by April 1 or shortly thereafter, start going to schedule those for court, I would say in the May-Junish timeframe. You don't want to have 15 different court dates. Ideally, you'd want to bunch them up so you can go back to back to back to back to back on them.
Good question, excuse me. So the two that were set, that would attempt to be delivered by Brunswick County sheriffs, they were unsuccessful in delivering those?
Yes, sir, we double-checked today.
How does that, what does that process look like? I mean, help me understand, help everybody understand.
The sheriff goes out there and we have, they don't send anything, we have to call the clerk, and it said they were returned on this date as being unserved. Apparently, one of them, the address we have in the file, and I'm not trying to throw staff into the buses, a vacant lot, so we're going to have to figure out, you know, I'm operating off of the file itself. And then the other just came back as unserved. Sometimes people don't answer the door when the sheriff's there and things of that nature.
Ryan, if I may ask, sir, when we file, what remedy are we seeking? A monetary fine, a?
Compliance and court costs, or in the alternative, an order allowing us to go on there and do it ourselves and put a lien on the property.
But not condemnation?
Oh, no, sir. A condemnation would mean we take title to it somehow, no, sir.
Matt, I have a question about the proposed new process. I know we've had conversations about repeat offenders and how they learn to work the system, and they know, they know what the schedule is, so they'll clean something up and then they'll immediately go back to being out of compliance again. I haven't had a chance to read this line by line. Will the proposed process help remedy those repeat offenders and the amount of time they have to keep, keep, keep repeating?
Sure. And in our ordinance, a courtesy notice is not a requirement. The first notice that you get can be the notice of violation. We typically send a courtesy notice, because a lot of times, people may not know what the ordinance says, but in those cases of repeat offenders, and I've reiterated this to the staff, the zoning technicians that enforce these ordinances, that you don't have to take that first step if it's somebody that you've had to deal with in the past and it's the same ordinance violation, you can go ahead and send them the notice of violation at that point. So in that instance, you're right, we would, we would skip that step, yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Matt, on your proposed code case process, under citation issued, bullet number one, you said fine daily until site brought into compliance. Can you tell us what that fine consists of?
Fifty dollars, fifty dollars.
Someone allowed by the state, is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
And currently, we do not have that, I don't see that indicated on your current code case?
That's right, yes, sir.
No, no fine.
Matt, can you clarify, please, for the public? What constitutes a notice of ordinance violations? I'm told that people report the same thing over and over and over and over, and seemingly nothing is done. So what must the public do to actually satisfy whatever requirement the town has for reporting a violation?
Yeah, I mean, there's a few avenues you can do. You can obviously contact me, and I'll get it out to code enforcement officials as appropriate. The easiest way is to go to our town website, if you're computer literate. Under Contacts, there's one actually for code enforcement that you click on. That goes to me, code enforcement, and both of our zoning technicians, so that covers several people. So on the event that somebody's out of office, we actually have somebody else to pick that In addition, we're not police officers, obviously, we're zoning technicians. You know, my very first job was being a zoning technician, code enforcement somewhere. Anything, any information that citizens can provide to us, especially if it's a violation that's not readily visible from the public right-of-way, is helpful. That being said, we usually need time-damped and stated photographs of when something's happening, because that's what we have to do for our evidence. But that's helpful, I'm not saying it's the end-all, be-all, but it's certainly helpful to us and our staff review of it. You know, a full description of exactly what's going on, where, the address, if you know it, really, the more information you can provide to us, the better in order for us to make sure that we're addressing the problem that you're seeing as well on our end. And as Ms. Carter noted, it's not unusual for people to have a problem, especially with yard debris or something like that, when we go out, we send them a notice or a courtesy notice, or even a notice of violation, clean it up, and then we take a look, it's in compliance, and then they go right back out of compliance. So that's why, that's where speeding this process up and ensuring there is only technicians know that they don't have to send that courtesy notice every time, they can skip right to the notice of violation, you can skip right to the citation in a lot of instances, letting them know that we do have the ability under our ordinances to speed that process along. So, yeah.
I would encourage us to do that.
Absolutely, yes, ma'am.
And that Mr. Eads, whatever speed we can exercise to satisfy the requirement for notification, I would suggest that we move on that as well, if it's posting it in the paper or whatever it is, so we can move these cases along. Some of them have just lingered for far too long. And Matt, the reason I asked about the reporting, I stood behind someone in the permit office yesterday, who, they're now in legal straits because of what's happening next door to them, and they've attempted to report that, and the, unless we have an updated list, that home is, that in violation has not made any of the lists, and so that somehow, there are things that are slipping through the cracks and whatever we can do to, to...
If you know the address, send me an email with it, and I'll look into it for you tomorrow.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, because they're, they're suffering as a result of what isn't getting done next door to them. Yes, and I'll make sure I get that to you, and I'll, as well as the people's name and phone number, so.
Great.
Matt, I think, I'd like to applaud you for the efficiency that you're gaining in this new process. This is significantly advanced from what we're doing currently. As far as the number of enforcement personnel that you have on your team, can, what is, how many do you currently have?
We have two zoning technicians on staff right now.
Full-time, 100%, that's what they're decked against?
Hmm?
Full-time?
There are two right now who are full-time, yes, sir. But are you asking if they're part-time or full-time, or if they're full-time doing enforcement?
No, you have two full-time personnel, and part of their job is zoning enforcement.
Yeah, that's correct, yes, sir. We have the duty split right now, because they also, zoning technicians handle inspections for new construction, for zoning-related matters. So we actually have one person, they cover each other, but one person's primary duty is handling inspections, and one person's primary duty is code enforcement, but they're cross-trained, and they obviously help each other out when they're out in the field, so.
Anything else, council?
Just one additional thing, Matt, yesterday, I'd ask you if you could provide a list of current open cases, and I know you were going to check and see if your system would allow you to print something out, that goes, I've heard the same thing. I've turned this house in, I've turned this house in, and it doesn't show up on the shortlist we have that Mr. Eads is working on, so I'd like to see if it's on there.
As soon as I can figure out how to run that report in our system, I'll be glad to get it to you. I might need to get with my technical advisor, Steve Edwards, over here, who knows it a little better than me. But yes, ma'am, I'd be happy to provide it.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Mr. Kraft or Mr. Bock?
I'm good.
Thank you, Matt, for working on a new process, and thank you, Mr. Eads, for expediting getting these things taken care of. I know it's not a fun part of your job, but it is necessary. I appreciate your efforts.
The only last thing is apologies to council and the public on the Green for Life. We thought, last time we contacted Brunswick County, they came together and we were able to ask questions about the Green for Life, because that is the contractor for Brunswick County, but I made a note to reach out to them and tell Green for Life they need to show up themselves to come back in front of council. So apologies for that earlier.
We'll get there, thank you very much. Is there anything else? No, before I went to Mr. Eads, is there anything else, Mr. Keller?
No, ma'am, thank you.
Mr. Eads?
Yes, Madam Mayor, there has been a, and again, I'm talking to the council in the town, it's my client, I'm not giving general legal advice to the public, but there had been a question posed regarding a note in our code of ordinances in our UDO as to whether we can, based on the number of occupants, convert a residential use to a motel use. And I can read that verbatim if you'd like. Hotel motel use, that was a note that wasn't actually in the body of the UDO. Since that time, I believe 160D has passed, and there's a few statutes that govern this. And again, this is about classifying what would otherwise be a residential use to a commercial use. The town is limited by the authority that the general statutes give us. Of significant note, 160D 702 prevents the town from passing ordinances that regulate residential homes, including the interior layout, the number of rooms, or the type of room, so you can't say you can only have five bedrooms, for instance. Additionally, 160D 706 prohibits the town from defining something more restrictively than that which the NC Building Code, and I may call upon Steve and/or Matt to fill this in, they have more of the technical knowledge. In 2015, the NC Building Code Council heard a case that arose out of the Outer Banks, and one of the things they held is that you cannot, a town cannot change the nature of the use based on the fact that it's being used for vacation rental. There are some caveats to that. If you have a vacation rental that is renting room by room and has onsite staff, like a concierge or something like that, then I think that, and Steve, feel free, why don't you come on up? So that, that, this was a collective, I don't take credit for all of this, Matt worked hard on it, and Steve has worked hard on it. So I don't know where that note came from, I think we had an outside firm assist with that.
A joint effort between Dale Holland and Jake Perez.
But essentially, you can't, the town can't, under these circumstances, particularly simply...
Bless you.
Bless you.
God bless you.
Because something's advertised as having more than 14 individuals for rent, cannot unilaterally, at all for that matter, under the present law, change that from a residential use to commercial use. That's correct. Any?
I think the question was in the UDO, at the very bottom, it talks about residences that have, that sleep more than 14 occupants are in fact classified as a hotel.
Right.
So it's not necessarily a class, considering them a commercial enterprise, but that would prohibit a hotel or motel from going into those residential zones.
Well, the motel hotel is a type of use, so if you wanted to classify it from residential to hotel motel, you'd have to have the authority to do so, and absent, and Steve, feel free to weigh in here, because I know you did a lot of work on this, we just don't have that authority to do that, and...
Yeah, the statutes are clear, and the building codes are clear, the statutes clearly state that we can't define a dwelling unit, anything other than a dwelling unit based off of the state building code definitions. So even if you go in there and you say, I'm going to classify this as a, this advertised for more than 14 bedrooms as a hotel, you, now you're zoning it out of the district where a single-family residential homes are permitted, you're going in conflict of what the state's trying to prohibit a local jurisdiction from doing. You can't call something a hotel just because it's advertised for more than 14 people. And the case that Brian was talking about, that the building code council overruled, was a local inspector in the Currytuck County had classified this 24-bedroom house as a transient lodging, because they were advertising it to sleep a certain number of people, and that it was going to be wedding venues, family reunions, and those type of events. And, and they got the Department of Insurance engineering staff to make a formal interpretation that that use was a transient lodging, which is a hotel, and that's a R3 classification, I believe. And the Board of the Building Code Council, because the people that were building the house, appealed that, because it triggered a whole lot more building codes to go along with it. But the Building Code Council did take that appeal up, and they overturned the Department of Insurance ruling that it was, that it could not be reclassified as a hotel. Now, this also was, when Jake and Dale Holland were working on this language, it was also during the transition, when the state legislators were drafting new laws to prevent local jurisdictions from being able to regulate by interior design. So once they did that, you know, we were trying to focus on what we could do, but based off of the general statutes, this building code case that was overturned, I feel that it's confident that we cannot regulate a single-family dwelling as a hotel use and restrict it out of a residential neighborhood.
So bottom line, Steve, I guess you said this already, bottom line... So bottom line, Steve, I guess you said this already, bottom line is if they rent it out room by room, that is one situation. But if it's a four thousand square foot house, or even a five thousand square foot house, as long as they comply with impervious surface and the parking and everything, we have to call it a single-family residence.
Yes.
And I don't think, and correct me if I'm wrong, Steve, I don't think it's just room by room, because you see that in college towns all the time. I think it's more of a, you, you have.
You would have on-staff that's renting out, you'd come in, you'd check in a room, and, and more transient lodging. The, the college thing, that's usually, they're gonna be long-term, it's not gonna meet short-term rental definitions, so that would not be applicable. It's, bed and breakfast could be an example of renting out room by room, and our ordinance does address bed and breakfast, and the building codes actually address bed and breakfast, and they have triggers in there as to when additional safety requirements are made to be enforced.
Thank you.
Mr. Edwards, does the state building code have a, a minimum allowable bedroom size?
No.
So it can be five by five and then call it a bed?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, they do. There, there is a minimum, I think it's like five by seven is, is about the minimum-sized room. There was a code case this past summer where somebody complained, and it turned out the, the room was, met the minimum requirements, had the egress window, and it had the proper-sized door, and it had smoke detectors inside and outside of the, what used to be a pantry, and then got converted over to a, a five-by-seven bedroom.
Mr. Edwards, a question if I could. So in doing my own research, you know, looking at the, the law prohibits regulation of building design elements, okay, and it references what that consists of, that is silent as to, as far as I can been able to find out, that's silent as to occupancy of any number of individuals. Is that something for us to potentially take another run at, specifically as to occupants versus numbers of bedrooms?
No. Wait, wait, that's, again, that's regulating by interior design. Now, at one time, when we were on septic system, they regulated the flow, and that's, that's about the only thing that they could regulate, but there's just no way to track how many people are staying in a house. And, and again, like you said, the code does, it is silent on looking at the number of occupancy that can be in a single-family resident.
Not to belabor the point, I, I didn't see that, though. I did not see anything with, with respect to numbers of occupants.
Yeah, it, it does, it's not, now, the building codes for the commercial section does have a table of occupancy, and, but it doesn't, one and two-family dwellings do not have that.
And, and the fire code is silent on that as well, right?
One and two-family dwellings are exempt from the fire codes as well.
See, 'cause like you, you know, you see these businesses or restaurant, bar-type places that are packed, that could be a fire code violation, that's another enforcement mechanism. But we're restricted on the residential use because it's not a commercial enterprise. And I personally am not aware of a cap of, a cap prohibition on occupants. Not saying that it couldn't be done, but I'm not, I'm not seeing that anywhere. And then you run into the logistic problem of, how are you gonna determine who's an occupant? And I think you probably have some constitutional issues, too. I mean, you're not, most people don't have twelve kids.
And with respect to the vacation properties, I mean, they're all listed on the VRBO, Better Beach Rentals, Oak Island Accommodations, and they clearly state the number of occupants that it sleeps. Sleeps thirty-two, sleeps thirty-four, sleeps thirty-eight. I mean, that's a, that's pretty clear, rather than us having to do any type of research as to how, who's gonna, an occupant, who's not, they're advertising those numbers of occupants.
And, and I hear what you're saying, and, and I personally think that.
Not to belabor the point.
I'm sorry, did I interrupt you?
I said not to belabor the point, I apologize.
No, no, I mean, I personally think it's gonna take a cata, and I've said this to him blue in the face, a catastrophe, I think it's gonna be one of these massive houses with a bunch of kids in there, and apparel's gonna occur, and I think that's what's gonna have to get the General Assembly's attention to open that up. But the question that was posed to me was this note in our UDO, which has to do with reclassifying a residential use to a hotel motel use, and that's what I was trying to address.
So, so Madam Chair, one, one point of concern, for the benefit of the public, we use a hosting service called MuniCode, that's where you go out and find our ordinances and our unified development ordinance. That statement is still out there, and that's a concern because that's where the public goes to look at our ordinances. So I would like to ask what we can do to get that removed ASAP from, from being hosted out, from being, from showing up out there.
If I may. As a part, as you know, that note is at the end of the Table of Uses. That's something that, in the planning board's discussion so far, it seems like they're partial to removing that note for all these things that we've talked about today as a part of that Table of Uses review. So at that point, should the planning board make that recommendation official and town council approve their recommendations, or a portion of it, however you want, at that point, it'll be in front of you one way or another at that point, and like I said, our target date for that is May, for that to be in front of you, so.
My concern is that it sounds like it's not legal for us to stipulate that, so I would, I would want to remove that post haste, and I don't know if we're limited, Madam Clerk, by the number of times we can submit changes to them, or.
No, we're not.
I'm not Madam Clerk, but no, we're not, sorry.
So the state.
I, I agree with Ms. Stites, is what I was saying.
So the state will protect by putting fire codes in place when those rooms are rented by people that perhaps, you know, one by one, that don't know each other, but it's not willing to protect the people that occupy those bedrooms in large numbers when it's residential.
That's a tough question to answer.
It wasn't a question, it was a statement.
Okay. Well, it's a tough statement to follow up on, but.
Seemingly challenging.
The state, you know, objectives are public safety and welfare, and, and they do take into consideration a single-family house versus a larger commercial residential condominium complex, and, and there are more life safety because you've got more families at risk. Now, of course, these large homes that you're talking about, that sleep the thirty range, that town did take action, and we were able to get the Building Code Council to approve the fire sprinkler system ordinance, or the state fire code that allowed us to look at fire flow. It doesn't guarantee that we're gonna get fire suppression system in all the homes, it's just the ones where the fire hydrant flow rate doesn't meet the flow area requirements for the size of the home. So it's a hit and miss out there, because we've got some hydrants that are producing two to three thousand gallons a minute, and then we've got some that are around nine hundred gallons a minute, and it's just all depending on how they are, you know, in the system.
How they're situated.
But.
Thank you for that clarification.
Yeah.
Counsel, are we done?
Let's move on, we've got a long agenda.
And I'm just, just wanna be clear, the question I was looking at was whether we can reclassify it, not whether we can ultimately limit the number of occupants or at least indexed at the number of square footage per house, so. Sorry, Mr. Bock, didn't mean to belabor the point.
Asked and answered, once again. It's, I don't like the answer, but the issue is change the state legislature, change the law.
Okay, moving along, all business. Consideration of contract for the Southeast Ninth Street Canal crossover repairs.
If you have any questions about the contract or any items, I think one of the questions that came up earlier, this is in the budget already, it was four hundred and fifty thousand dollars in the budget, the bid in front of you is four hundred and sixty-four, I believe. The other fourteen thousand dollars will be pulled from additional line items that's in that budget, so we can make up those additional funds that are needed with some line transfers. But this is a, Evans, who was doing the work on Twentieth Street, I believe everybody was happy with the contracted work there, and this is also something that we've been trying to do for the last three years, couldn't get the bids, the bids finally came in where we were able to afford, and we asked to move this forward.
Thank you.
Questions?
Yes.
Thank you. Ms. Kelly? I noticed there's nothing in here regarding insurance requirements for the contractor. Is it safe to assume that those requirements were stated in general conditions or supplementary general conditions?
Yes, ma'am. I'll get you a copy of that, I think it's about seventy-seven page document, but I'll get that to you.
That's okay, as long as it's covered, that's good, yeah.
And before we leave, just to, to confirm, this is the same contractor who successfully just finished Twentieth Street, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Because your, your preface here indicates we had to change contractors due to inordinate delays, so we have the right contractor again, correct?
The other contractor got a job, DOT, doing a bridge work, so they asked to be released from the original contract, and that's how we found Evans. They were the ones that originally bidded on it two years prior.
Thank you.
It was actually a local vendor that's doing the work.
Counsel, is there a motion?
If I could, just a question, Mr. Kelly. During a discussion earlier, we talked a little bit about a potential delay due to pilings.
Yes, sir.
So the contract, as stipulated, says a work must begin within two months and complete within a hundred and twenty days. Do you see us finishing within that window based upon a potential piling delay?
So the last time we actually talked to EB, the engineer on this, was about three weeks ago when we were on-site, the contractor said that he is probably anywhere from five to ten weeks on pilings, it all depends on what we gotta get, but he will start dismantling the other section of the pier, so he'll be doing some demo work and waiting for the pilings to come in, because he has to remove some before he gets to install some, so I don't think he saw an issue with the timetable. Because he can do, he'll be doing some demo work while we're waiting on the pilings.
Okay, thank you.
So once this gets completed, every walkway that we had that hasn't been damaged by a hurricane has been taken care of except Southwest Sixth.
So Ninth and Twentieth will be completed, and then there was a, a crossover that was presented two or three years ago in the budget to be looking at, and we've asked the engineer to give up some prices for that, present for the budget for some questions during the budget cycle.
Excellent, thank you.
Okay, back to motion, is there one?
I make a motion to award the bid for the repairs to the Southeast Ninth Street Canal crossover walkway to Evans &amp; Son Contracting, Inc. for the amount of four hundred and sixty-four thousand, sixty-five dollars, and to approve the contract as presented.
All in favor? Unanimous. Thank you very much. Consideration of bid and awarding a contract for paving, back to you, Mr. Kelly.
Yes, ma'am, I'll start this, but if you have any technical questions, Scott's here to be able to answer that. And so what this is, is we put it out for bids, the first bids, we only received two, so we couldn't accept, so we had to rebid, reason why it took a little longer. Barnhill and Highland Paving were the two bidders, they came in, Barnhill, as you can see what his price was, the one-four, Highland was the eight-eight, we're recommending the Highland bid. I know they were here before doing some paving, question came up, was there anything that we could do to them to make sure that we get it completed, I think December thirty-first of 2024 is the deadline. We asked counsel to like, take a look at item number six, the performance bond, to make sure that was valid, and.
Yeah, they have a performance bond, which means they, they don't perform under the contract, we can call the bond, and the bond generally has options, whether they wanna contest our calling the bond, require the, the bondee, the contractor, to do the work, or hire a substitute, or allow the town to do it and pay the town back. Is that what you were asking?
Yes. So they are, the bridge going into Wilmington is sort of slowing them down on some projects as well, so they are looking at possibility, coming to the town, starting some of the work here, and then once the bridge opened back up, they would be leaving to go there, and then they would come back later after the season to start the rest of our streets. That is something they may propose and talk about, so we can get them here a little earlier. Everything else is in order that we saw. If there's any other questions, we'd be glad to answer them, and I think Councilman Bock was wanting to make a point about some funding.
Well, yeah, just, I'll just note that thirty-three percent of the funding for this project, which is the largest we've undertaken in quite some time, has come from paid parking. That aside, there's, you note there's a percentage that we might be able to increase the number of streets paved, is that contingent on progress? I guess, Scott, you can answer that, or? We have the list of streets in the bid, but potentially we could go further, correct?
We can, we've got, of course, the million-dollar budget, so I can bring that up, they've already been notified that they can continue on, and I'll get some streets together that will fill out the rest of it.
And hopefully they're not, I'll just, as a comment, hopefully they're not gonna leave us at the altar again, they're actually gonna get this done.
Well, if this passes tonight, I'll certainly have a pre-construction meeting with them and voice concerns about that, and hopefully we both learned a little something from the last one and we move forward.
Thank you.
Scott, along those lines, I know Mr. Chilo has a couple of streets that are important to him, Northeast Ninth Street's always been important to me. How do we go about getting additional streets encompassed in that million dollar that we have available?
What I would normally do is go by our rating system that was done by the outside contractor and just continue on from where we left off.
And then also.
So what we discussed the other day when you asked this question, since at least probably eight years or ten years, we have been following this process. Before, we would have a list and come to council, council would choose which road they wanted to pave. If that is something that this council would like to take back off our shoulders, we would be glad to give it to you. But that is, that is something, if, if council has looked at a road and it, it does have something in, in serious dire need, like the asphalt's totally gone and it's on the list, or something happened between the study and where we are now, something came up, we had a washout or something and the road got washed away, Scott makes those notes during the storm events as well, so we add those. But just to go back and say Ninth Street or something like that, if council gave us direction, then it was from council for us to go pave that road, so when somebody called asking, why did Tenth get paved, we would refer them back to council.
And I can, I appreciate that, and I accept that, yes.
Objectivity is important here, and having an external vendor assess, I think the step that we're missing, because I think all of us up here get those calls all the time, like, why don't you fix my street? Scott actually has access to the scores, right? And so if you have the score, you can give it, you know, on the scale, and that makes objective sense to most people, not everyone, but most people.
The entire study is on, on our website.
But this contract is from probably April through December thirty-first.
Yes, sir.
And in our budget meetings in April, we're, we are pretty sure we're going to set aside some more money for paving. So on the onset, when they come, I'd like for them to know that we have more money coming and more work coming.
So if council, we've done this before, if council comes back and adopts a budget that goes into effect on July first, and you put back where you had the same number, a million dollars again for paving, we have a active contract with the person that went through the bid process with. We could negotiate, now, I have, if Catherine, if I'm saying something wrong, she'll correct me, but we should be able to actively address these people for the prices and the volumes that they continually to have, and if they could honor those same things, then we would continue the contract if council so chose, to extend that for a period of time to pave whatever the next volume of streets were.
So their bid proposal included unit prices and?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, David, thank you, Scott.
Any other questions?
Thank you, Scott, send us the score for Northeast Ninth, please.
I was gonna ask for it.
Shut the bell.
I'm getting the same calls, I'm not anywhere near it, so let's figure out what it is.
Thank you, Scott. Is there a motion, counsel?
Phil, you wanna do the honors here?
Yes. Northeast Ninth is not on there.
Page sixty-three.
I make a motion to award the bid for paving to Highland Paving and to approve the contract as presumed.
Second.
Unanimous. Moving right along, consideration of amendment of the town's Code of Ordinances, tree and vegetation guidelines. vegetation guidelines.
Would you like to call Rick on up?
Sorry?
Would you like to have Rick come up, or y'all go talk about it, or what would you like to do?
Well, I think Rick needs to propose what he's... Tell us what he's proposing and why, and I'm sure there'll be questions.
So, I'll kind of jump down to the conclusion. I've tried to demonstrate, so what I'm proposing is that we, you made a change last month, that on newly planted, large canopy trees that are two inches when we plant them, that we do credit those five DBH credits for future growth. And I've tried to demonstrate, provided some documentation to you, I've tried to demonstrate crediting a newly planted two-inch tree that's a large canopy tree from our Table 2, five DBH future credit is not only consistent with other municipalities, but the most sustainable way to ensure an increase in our canopy growth. And I'll, I can take any questions.
Counsel? Question for Mr. Patterson?
Yeah, so, Mr. Patterson, so, when you looked at, and we talked about this the other week, but looking at some of the towns that you pulled that two inches equal, should get five inches worth of credit, the lot sizes in Asheville, North Carolina, and Decatur, Georgia, and I believe it was Fairfax, Virginia, are a multiple of our average lot size. So, that skews the math, right? So, the chance, because they're building, the envelope sits in the middle of a much larger lot, is the likelihood of retain increases significantly greater in those communities than it is here in Oak Island due to the size of our lot. So, that's the first thing. And second thing, and again, go to our conversation. So, six trees, you're proposing, six two-inch trees. There are three-inch trees, four-inch trees, combination of three, four, and two. That can, builders certainly have that ability to do that. And lastly, the two-inch DBH tree you referenced, that stated that that will have a 30-foot canopy in 10 years.
10 to 20 years.
Our meeting, we said, you said 10, and I researched that diligently, and it was a multiple of 10. So, to get to the drawing that you showed us, I mean, this is not a 10-year drawing. This is potentially a 20- or even a 30-year drawing of what that's going to look like.
I think 10 to 20 years is what we spoke about. So, Asheville, I think it's just the opposite of where you explained it. I think there, here with such small lots, we're even more, I'm going to go back to my conclusion again, but what will happen if we crowd too many trees on our small lots, this is my conclusion part, what we should avoid is crowding newly planted trees too close to structures and neighboring properties, because they're going to grow. And the native trees we're selecting, the live oaks that's on that sheet are going to grow really well here, native here, which will ultimately result in their removal. So, as they grow, yeah, we can plant them, and in 10 years, they're all over the neighbor's house, they're all over your house, there's all the things that we don't want, and at that time, those trees will be cut down. And I don't think there's a court or a council anywhere that would allow your planted tree that's 10 to 20 years old to destroy my house or their own house. So, and if we do that, then what's the end result? What the end result is, that we've actually, we've actually wasted seven or eight years of canopy growth, and we've wasted a lot of financial resources, where if the trees would have been properly spaced or properly credited, that we may not have to remove those trees. And especially on these very small lots we have, and I think the two-scale GIS drawing continues to show, you know, again, over and over, where's those, you can plant them, sure, but in 10 to 20 years, when they're starting to really grow, starting to really provide shade and canopy, they're going to be interfering with your house and the neighbor's house.
Excuse me. Out of board. Thank you. Counsel?
But I'll go ahead and address my credentials. I'm a certified professional horticulturist.
Should that stop? Excuse me.
Through the American Society of Horticultural Science, and I'm one of five in the state of North Carolina that can provide legal representation for you and can provide expert witness in court.
Thank you.
I just want to reassure my colleague, Mr. Chulo, that I too heard 10 years. I didn't hear anything about 20 years, and I too did some research based on our new Table 1. I went and looked at large plants, and I referenced the tree canopy spread and coverage in urban landscapes from the Virginia Tech Urban Forestry. And many of these trees don't even have that spread at 20 years. There are some that only have a spread of 10 feet at 20 years, and so, I just, I don't, I don't buy into it. The other issue that I have is that our town has not been consistent in its enforcement of anything, not just trees, but of anything. And so, I'm reluctant to go out on a limb and give this a try, just because you reassured me that you're going to enforce this. I'm willing to give it, give it, give it a year, and if it looks like it's working, I would be willing to come back and consider it, along with some other things that we may realize need to be tweaked in this ordinance, but tonight, I'm not going to support it.
Counsel, any other comments? Is there a motion on the table?
Just one comment from me. In addition to Mr. Patterson's credentials that he mentioned, he's also been recognized for other work that he's done on a national level, and he's still referenced for some of that recognition to this day. But I would like to point out that tonight, on the consent agenda, we approved the minutes for the January 7th meeting. So, on page 37, I'll read this again, as I did last month. Mayor White suggested that there should be one motion to accept Section 32-76, 1, A, B, and E, which would become D, from Mr. Patterson's recommendations that evening. Councilman Martin made the motion to accept Mr. Patterson's text amendments for Section 32-76, 1, A, B, and D. Ms. Gartner seconded the motion, and it was passed unanimously.
Your point being?
My point being, all of a sudden, last month, we reopened this text and decided to create some logic that, since we didn't call out the subnumbering section of B1, then I made the argument last month that we also did not call out 1A1, or 1A2, or 1A3, or 1A4, yet that subsection was completely ignored in the logic used to wipe 1AB out of the text. So, I would suggest for this council, talking about consistency, to let's be consistent with motions that we have passed unanimously within another meeting at the direction of staff, and I am going to be in support of Mr. Patterson's text amendment, as I was at the January 17th meeting.
Mr. Martin, that's a slippery slope to go down. We made a motion in January, I made the motion, for fees for resident parking permits, and we came back in the next meeting, and you opened it back up and changed it again. So, be careful about pointing fingers.
Well, I only did that because you opened up this one, so.
Come on.
You established a precedent.
We're above that. This tit-for-tat doesn't fly. Let's move on. So, we've got something in front of us that warrants either a motion or no action is taken. Mr. Bach?
Let me suggest another path here. So, what Mr. Martin says is true, and what Ms. Gartner says is also true. Counsel, in its rules of procedure, can reconsider motions passed. We clearly have done that. And frankly, the confusion of the last meeting on Chapter 32, which some of us have talked about, five-hour meetings, and, you know, people are making decisions at the end of the night, and to be fair, Mr. Patterson wasn't here to answer questions which would have been raised. So, we can argue that it was passed, but I would argue that we didn't have the full context of his argument, and we've heard it tonight. And I heard my colleagues say, I'll consider that in a year. It may be reasonable, but right now, we have a system based on caliper, not canopy. And maybe from the standpoint of cost, it makes a lot of sense, right? If I have 1,000 trees, and I plant them, and they're two inches in diameter and 600 grow, it's probably cost-effective for the town, but we're talking about residential lots and neighborhoods. And so, the ordinance that was proposed, right, or as we understood it, I'll just speak the plain truth out loud. It's the most restrictive tree ordinance we've had. It protects trees, it protects the canopy near term. Mr. Patterson's approach would have us rely on the development of saplings 15 years down the road. So, you know, radically different approach. I'm willing to say that we proceed with caliper, but we are going to revisit the enforcement, revisit the experience, and we may well, we may well want to have a canopy approach later on, or we may want to adjust what the planning board just put together after a year-long struggle. So, I think we can revise. I think we've heard the argument, and either you subscribe to that argument, which is predicated on an optimistic view of the future, or you prefer caliper and larger trees right now, and you prefer a credit system. It's a choice. Does that make sense?
That makes a lot of sense.
All right.
Only in regard to, you take it out, now you want to sit here for a year and wait. Why doesn't that same philosophy work to put it back in, and let's wait a year and make another ruling in a year? I just don't understand the logic behind, we all agreed to have it in there back in January, now we're taking an item out, and we're saying, well, we're going to wait for a year and see what that looks like. I don't think you're going to see anything in a year, whether it's in there or not in there. So, I would rather have it in there, and then, if you want to evaluate it a year from now, we can, we can have that discussion. I guess that's what I don't understand.
It would work either way.
It would work either way. That's the logic in it, so.
I'd like to make a motion that we reapprove what we approved last month, the Chapter 32, and remove the proposed wording for 32-76, 1B-1. Planted trees shall be credited, and just remove that, what's in, what's been redlined in our agenda packet.
I'm going to ask Mr. Eze to weigh in on this, but I think if you don't want the redline portion, it's not in there now, so you wouldn't need to take any action.
I think I'd like to make it, if I may, I'd like to make a motion on this. I don't want to leave any more questions. Let's get this in black and white. Let's get it over, done with, and memorialized.
So, can we reword that, since the whole ordinance isn't before us? Can we reword that maybe to motion to deny the staff proposal to include 32-76, 1B1?
That would work as well. Yes, please.
Is there a second?
Second.
I'd like to offer an amendment to your motion with the understanding that we will evaluate the program at the end of the year, calendar year, from its implementation, and we will look to ascertain the efficiency of the enforcement, and we'll also consider a new Mr. Patterson's proposal, and he may well want to submit a variation of that, but I don't want to lose the potential for change. And we've talked about, we'll take a look at it. Did I misunderstand you?
I said I would consider looking at it. I don't want it hard and fast and stone. There are going to be multiple items, I believe, in this Chapter 32 that we're going to need to revisit in the coming year.
We'll revisit Chapter 32 in its entirety.
With recommendations?
Does that seem fair? Is that fair to what you're...
Yeah, there are some things that Mr. Patterson's pointed out that aren't in here, like fines and things like that.
I'm trying to second your thought, but get the phraseology right. So, Chapter 32 in its entirety, is that acceptable?
I'll accept that.
Okay.
Can you repeat the question?
It's a motion to deny the staff proposal to add 32-76, 1B1, and that this will be, that Chapter 32 in its entirety will be reviewed at the end of the year.
End of the calendar year?
That's the way I interpret it.
Or in a year, in a one-year timeframe?
A calendar-year timeframe's fine.
All right, so, we'll revisit it in December, is that what we're...
Well, it's not actually in effect yet, correct?
Well, that's the second thing I was going to bring out. Let's get this done, and then, it's when this goes into effect, does the March 15th...
Review a calendar year from its effective date of implementation.
Okay, there you go.
Which was March 15th.
So, we're including the March 15th as implementation date? Is everyone okay with that?
I'd like to use the word "may" rather than "will." Will is a mandate that we're going to have the same pain inflicted upon us a year from now, and "may" is more open-ended. If we feel, if a councilman feels that they would like to bring that forward, then that's something we can discuss. I'd rather remove it as a mandate.
I'm going to disagree with you, my colleague. I think this is so new, so large, and it's been debated to such a degree, that this ought to be an automatic reconsideration, and I agree with Councilman Gartner's adjustment to my original motion, it should be all of 32. I think we should take a look at it. May, will, I'm not going to quibble, but I think we would be negligent if we didn't review it and say, okay, a year later, has there been progress? Has there been enforced? What other changes could we make? But in order to move along, that's fine, because I will surely bring it up next year.
What that implies by revisiting it, because it is such a large initiative, and with that comes the implication of collecting data along the way that would help to inform a relook as to whether it's being effective or not.
One would hope we would have data, or at least considered impressions, anecdotal, et cetera. I'm not going to quibble over May or will. I think we're obligated to look at it, but in order to move this forward, May is fine. I like the month of May, it's fine.
To finally say something on this, last year, when we were kicking around paid parking, and I was usually by myself and outvoted 4 to 1 on most of the things we talked about on paid parking, one of the concessions that gave me a little comfort was, we would take a look at it a year later and tweak what issues on paid parking need to be tweaked. So, I like the idea of taking a look at something a year later. It may or may not change, but we need to take a look at things.
Can you agree to take a look?
It doesn't matter, because John said he's going to bring it up anyways.
Well, I'm just trying to get closure.
We just have to get, we have to get a motion.
Right, I believe it should be will, but Councilman Chulo had a point about semantics and intent there.
I would like to leave the motion as may, and let's, I'd like to make the motion that it may be revisited in a year.
Councilman Bach is in agreement. It was his motion to begin with.
The amendment is accepted, but I didn't hear a second to the motion.
I'll second the amendment as well.
Do we need to vote on the amendment?
No, I think Councilman Chulo has accepted the amendment, and Councilman Gartner, you're second to the amended motion.
Yes.
Okay.
All in favor? Four to one.
Ask for opposed.
I'm sorry?
Will you ask for the opposed?
Yes, I'm sorry, opposed.
Thank you.
I'm not used to asking for opposed. I apologize. All right, moving on. All right, moving on.
Thank you, Mr. Patterson. Consideration of water tower lease for Verizon on Southeast 56th Street.
As Madam Mayor, as you recall, a few months ago, we discussed the original version. We had some proposed revisions. We sent that back to Revison, Verizon, Revison. And I'd like to go briefly through their response. Last month, I informed you, well, I'll just start. You know, we had three and a half percent annual rent escalator. They said three percent was the max, so that's changed back to three percent. I had them add in Section 6 of the lease, the premises are leased on an as-is, where-is They did include the insurance requirements. That's on page four of the lease. They asked them to include named and endorsed in the additional insurance provision. There's a legal reason for that, but they added the word, the phrase "endorsed." They deleted, they agreed to our deletion of the right of first refusal. Accepted in Paragraph 30. A sentence we added about the public records. They also deleted the most favored lessy provision that we asked them to, so they agreed to that, and they accepted the provisions we asked for regarding governing law, legal costs, and memorandum of lease. The one thing they did not agree to, and this is what we talked about last week, we had wanted a mutual ability to terminate for no reason. They said that if they invest, they can't take the risk of investing that much money and putting all this equipment up if we can terminate the lease for no reason. I don't think that's unreasonable. We can still terminate them for cause. So unless you have any questions, the lease is in your agenda packet.
On page five, Mr. Eads, there's an F that's empty.
I believe that was one of the... One second there. That was, we had several competing insurance clauses in there, and that was one of the ones that was duplicative. And that's likewise, there's a, Paragraph 17 was intentionally omitted, and I think that was a right of first refusal.
The lease is noted as intentionally omitted. Is that what's required for F, or do we just move G up?
We can do it either way, ma'am.
It's of the council, but I just wanted to point that out. For the sake of moving along, why don't we put intentionally omitted?
Ma'am?
For the sake of moving this along, why don't we?
We can just strike it.
Intentionally omitted.
Yes, ma'am, we can do that. That'll make it consistent with Paragraph 17. Or Section 17.
Other questions from council?
Mr. Eads, thank you for working through these changes with Verizon, and I understand the reasoning behind not giving the lessor the ability to terminate the lease. I do have some concern that the town doesn't seem to have an out anywhere in here. We're encumbering the town for 25 years because the renewals are automatic. You know, I would like to see the renewals be, you know, automatic by both parties or something. If they won't agree to it, they won't agree to it, but I just hate for the town not to have an out somewhere.
Just under general contract law, we would have an out for breach of the agreement, but that, to your point, you're right, if it's automatic renewal, we don't have a say-so in that. So...
What do you recommend?
They're going to want, again, you know, these things are pretty expensive investments for them, but at the same time, they want to use our space. They're going to want, most likely, more than one five-year term. So 10 years, I mean, five years plus one, automatic renewal, and then mutual thereafter. And that's not come up in our prior discussions.
Yeah, understood, just since they took it out of the other portion.
The termination, yes, ma'am.
Looking, where can we add it back in somewhere?
So this would be 25 total. Do you want to reduce that to 15? That's not, I've seen 15.
I would be good with the 25 if they would just agree that a portion of those four additional automatic renewals are mutual, by mutual consent.
Well, that's, okay, I'm sorry. That's what I'm saying.
Okay.
They get an automatic 15, initial term and two five-year renewals. Anything after that, it's got to be by mutual consent.
Sure.
Can we make that change?
Yes, ma'am.
Other questions? That was a good catch. Counsel?
If they don't agree to that, and they say it's a deal breaker for the not, the initial term and four additional five-year terms, do you want us to bring that back? Well...
No, I mean, if they say it's a deal breaker, I'm okay with letting it go, but it's worth a shot to try to get the town some protection for an out if we need it.
Tell you what, we may poll the council. I don't want to make that decision unilaterally, so. So it'd be the initial term plus two automatic renewals, anything thereafter mutually negotiated.
Mutual, yeah. So we can include that in the motion? Do we have a motion?
Lisa, do we need a motion?
Yes, I have a motion. If I could just state, the two changes would be, as Mr. Eads stated, automatic renewal for 15 years, and then the next two renewals would be by mutual agreement, and then in letter F, it will say intentionally omitted.
It's the initial term plus two automatic renewals. That'd be 15 years. And then any renewals thereafter mutually negotiated.
I make a motion as Madam Clerk stated.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Unanimous? Thank you very much. That brings us to the end of old business. Can we take a five-minute break?
That would be great. You're the chair, you get to call it if you want to.
I understand. We're taking a five-minute break. We are back from break. Meeting will resume with new business. First for consideration is a request for encroachment by the Lopez family. Begins on page 94.
I want to turn this back over to Lisa. I think she got some additional information.
Yes, sir. So Attorney Ryan Johnson had submitted this encroachment agreement request, and it was just the encroachment agreement itself, and asked if there was any additional information, and he said he would check with his clients. What's been supplied today is a memo from Mr. Johnson that staff received today, and that's been provided to council. And I believe it speaks to, the question as to why they're seeking the encroachment agreement.
Seemingly aesthetics. I'm sorry. It's seemingly aesthetics.
It's stated aesthetics.
All right. Counsel, have questions?
Did you see anyone here from the Lopez?
I was not told that anyone was going to be here. I'm not sure if anyone is here for this. Anyone here for the Lopez encroachment agreement?
There is a picture on page 98.
Yeah.
So they're requesting that they extend the gravel to the street.
This looks very similar to what I did two years ago, but I paid, I came and got a permit, did my drawing, and paid someone to pour concrete three feet wide, so I'd have a wider driveway. And seems like they're just wanting to do the same thing I wanted to do, but they're not buying concrete, they're buying gravel, so. I can see their rationale behind it. I don't have a problem with it.
Mr. Kelly, would you say that the encroachment request that they submitted is substantially similar to what the stated process here is in Oak Island?
Yes, sir. I think everybody has sort of seen within the right-of-way, council had changed the ordinance, I think, last year when we started looking at parking. But you see a lot of oyster shells, you see decorative rock, you see mulch, you see all kinds of materials in the right-of-ways. So I'd say the process that they're doing, we asked them to bring back an encroachment agreement, and that is what they brought back in front of you for your consideration. And then they attached the memo with a little bit of explanation on why they were wanting it.
So with respect to the established process that we do have, this is, again, substantially similar?
This will be the, this will be the first one since we adopted the other one.
Gotcha, okay.
And as well understood, that if the town does need access to the right-of-way, and they put something down there, it will be...
The ordinance says, and what staff has done previously is, if we're scheduling an emergency operation, there's not much we can do. We go in and pick up whatever we can, set it aside, and do what we need to do. If it's something that requires one of our utility contractors or something to go and work, we usually notify the property owner that we're getting ready to do something out there. If they have something that they would like to remove, they remove it. Stone, it all depends on if it's an inch thick or two-inch thick, what we can blade and save, and those kind of things, but we try to replace it back with materials that are there. The town would not go out and buy white rock to put back within the right-of-way, that would be back for theirs to be able to do.
But as Councilman Chulo said, they followed the regulations, if you want to file the paperwork and ask permission.
Is the rest of what you said in the policy that we won't replace in kind?
Yes.
Okay.
Also in their, if I may, it's also in their proposed agreement, last sentence on page one of three of the agreement, which, page 95. In the event the town decides in its sole discretion to close, relocate, widen, or otherwise modify the street within the right-of-way, the encroacher has, encroached upon, encroacher agrees to relocate or remove the encroaching infrastructure at their sole cost and expense. I would just recommend, if we're inclined to adopt this, we add, modify the street or, and/or access utilities. I'm assuming there's utilities in there.
There is that.
Next to that paragraph, page 95.
Page 95, the last paragraph on that page.
Okay, I got it.
Just, this is only referencing to manipulating the street in some way. I think we need to include any utilities located within the right-of-way east.
Did you get that, Lisa? Yes.
Mr. Kelly, just a curiosity, did, was anything about what they did a violation of anything in town? And the reason I ask is because when you drive by the location, the gravel was clearly already out to the road, and it's been raked back out of the right-of-way, so I'm...
David, and this is a case that staff has placed forward. I think there was a complaint from a property owner.
So they raked it back?
And then they did rake the stone back and put it back into the right, I mean, back onto their property.
Right.
And that's when they asked for what their options were, and then they prepared this for your review.
Mr. Eads, is the, is a right-of-way encroachment agreement the way the town wants to handle these or should handle these? Are we going to be bombarded hereafter with a million encroachment agreements that have to come before council?
One by one, by one.
The only legal way to do it, and we do have the code that makes this type of request possible.
On page 94.
Thank you. Which I'm sure you guys have seen this in your preparation of the night's meeting. If you get inundated with those type of requests, at that point, you could make a policy decision on how to either delegate it to staff. If you, that statute itself already has exceptions of what can already be in the If you get inundated with the same type of request that you would be inclined to do, you could add that to the exception, or as soon as I say delegated to staff, something's going to get issued that y'all don't want, so I'd rather y'all have the final say.
I think it's past time for us to take a good hard look at this and say yes or no next month.
Yeah, I mean, I think Councilmember Gartner has a valid point. There's numerous properties that have already done this without asking for permission. Now someone's trying to follow the process, and all that's going to do is trigger, oh, there's a process. And so now, all of a sudden, we could be inundated with all of these requests for putting gravel in the right-of-way. So I think we need to address this at a deeper level and either fix the ordinance or authorize staff to make a judgment call or whatever we need to do, so we're not going to sit here and listen to hundreds of encroachment requests for the rest of the year.
So one of the things I like about this is their attempt to extend the driveway versus putting gravel across the entire right-of-way to create additional parking spaces. Those are clearly different motivations, and council needs to be clear about how they want to move forward, in my opinion.
Well, the party has followed the process that we provided, so as much as I'd like to say no, I'm compelled to say yes, because they're compliant. And I'm not going, it's the hours later, I'm not going to opine again on what a nightmare this is, you're about to open Pandora's box. And the fundamental question, the quintessential question is, are we going to have a right-of-way policy, an ordinance that we enforce? We actively enforce it for all? Are we going to correct the egregious violations of it, or are we just going to look the other way? We've been down this road, prior councils, we've had prior campaigns, and there's a lot of rhetoric around this. It's an enormous undertaking, so this one we have to approve. I don't see a choice, I agree. But the bigger question is out there, and we've got a lot of things going on right now, but down the road, as in next year, this really neat, we need to take a hard look at this. And I will say this again, said it last time. For people who don't appreciate the risk and the difficulty here, the compounding factors, you need only look to Southport and watch them screaming at each other and flail, trying to grandfather some exceptions, not grandfather anything, bring in an external assessor, and so on and so forth, and it just ramifies quickly. So, yes, we need to be watching. If we start getting 100 of these, it's going to be problematic, right? And how we think about the right-of-way and how we want to administer the right-of-way, because it is the town's right-of-way. And I won't even go to street ends, because I know that'll get the mayor excited, that's another whole issue, all right? Careful what you wish for, let's make sure we have a plan.
And I understand that there's a lot of things going on, but the longer we allow this to linger, the more it's going to occur in the right-of-way where we prefer that it doesn't happen. You know, it's one thing to extend your driveway, but to create additional parking spaces is a whole nother issue.
With all due respect, Madam Mayor, if you take a casual drive around town, just eyeballing it, you can find several hundred violations right now, some of them permanently installed. Trees, ballards, chains, ropes, rocks, God knows what.
I agree.
So I think we need to pause and develop a plan, and this is going to take some time, and we're going to have to look at enforcement capacity, look at the actual language and... And we're going to have to look at enforcement capacity, look at the actual language, and so on and so forth. I'm fine with this. This is legal, this is, you know, by the book.
Do we need to make a motion, Lisa?
Yes.
As amended regarding the utilities, please. Motion to approve the agreement, proposed agreement as amended.
Sixty-three.
I make a motion to accept the proposed amendment, encroachment agreement as amended.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
I'm abstaining, Madam Mayor.
I think that's a yes vote, Mr. Brock.
That was a great speech, though.
Yes. That's what it is.
All right. Last item of New Business, consideration of amendment prohibited in public streets and rights of way. Another fun issue.
So if I may, Madam Mayor, since this is my, my motion to make, we need to be diligent about preserving our streets and safeguarding our sidewalks. And we've seen the upsurge in construction, lots of damage to side of roadways, in some cases, to public sidewalks, various other pieces of public property. And so what this amendment proposes to do is, before any site work begins, we are going to take a photograph, whether from drone or by the technician on the spot, to certify the original condition of the right-of-way, the roadway, public property. And we are going to hold that person accountable if there's damage, which there invariably is with construction of new homes, think concrete trucks. So it will be photographed at the completion, and the applicant, the applicant will be held responsible for repairing the roadway. They have 45 days to do it, or they face a $250 per day fine.
Is that applicant, the developer or the homeowner?
Whoever is the applicant.
Whoever fills out the paperwork.
The applicant is, okay, just wanted to clarify.
And they're responsible for their subcontractors?
Absolutely.
And is $250 a day fall within state guidelines?
Yes, we asked Madam that question earlier and said yes.
I think it sends a message that we're serious about this.
Don't disagree.
I mentioned to the town manager yesterday my concern. There's a situation where I walk every day, contractor's building a new house, sidewalk is rubble, and I want them to have to fix it. My concern is that the amount of time that they're allowed to fix it creates a very dangerous situation for pedestrians and animals, you know, who are on the sidewalk. So 45 days, I'm hoping that, you know, I hope that's passed enough that they'll get it.
Well, we can adjust it. This is something I'd be very interested in monitoring, because my street is torn apart. But I'm told getting a contractor, getting the concrete, getting it right, getting it re-inspected, it's probably going to take 45 days from the point they're put on notice. But I like the idea that we have irrefutable proof, and we have someone who is held accountable. Because otherwise, you get that, well, that was my sub, I wasn't here, I don't know.
Mail truck.
This is black and white. The side of the roadway, the sidewalk on 40th Street was in perfect condition until somebody drove a truck over it and smashed it, and we ended up paying the repair and trying to stop that.
I'm sorry, are you done? No, Councilmember Carter, were you getting ready to speak?
I was just going to say, I'm willing to go with 45 days, and let's see how that works. It's, it's been my observation that the damage, the significant damage occurs at the front end when they're moving grading equipment and things like that. Once the construction starts, it's just pickup trucks and vans, so.
And that's, so that's what I was going to add to your concern, Councilmember Carter, is in the subject summary, I think, and Councilmember Brock, correct me if I'm wrong, but I do read upon completion. So was your original intent that at the, at the final inspection of the permit, if there was damage that was now recorded, they have 45 days at completion of the work to repair?
That was my original intention.
That's not it.
Which means it would sit there for three or four months possibly before the 45-day starts.
Conceivably, but hopefully not. I'm willing to shorten the timeline, but we, I feel a need to make it practical, right? Because otherwise, they're not going to get a concrete truck out.
Well, my only concern is, is that that's written in the description, but it's not in the ordinance. The ordinance doesn't, or at least not that I, because you only included the section of the ordinance that the text changes in. Is there language ahead of this that implies upon completion of the, of the work?
No, it's just the way the ordinance reads, and my apologies if it's not as it was intended, failure to remediate documented damage within 45 days. So whenever the inspector notices the damage, if it's five days after they started because they brought in a whole bunch of equipment, or if it's at the final inspection, is the way it reads now.
I think we need to, that was also my point, Mr. Martin, is is there a stage in the construction process? Or is it, once the incident or the situation is noted? I think we need clarity there, because I'm not sure completion of construction really adequately identifies when the 45-day window begins.
What, could we just add at final inspection or from date of final inspection?
We could.
Concerns me about the pedestrian safety, though, particularly on the sidewalk.
Some homes take, for some builders, six, eight, 12 months.
Well, Mr. Kelly, development services enforcement people are making periodic visits to the site, are they not?
Yes, sir. What zoning technicians do before every land development permit's issued, they go out currently, like you said earlier, they photograph the adjacent right-of-ways for any existing damage. And throughout the inspection, that's usually their first time out there. And then, of course, they go and they look at after it's been cleared, and the silt fence and construction driveways, and so that'll be their second time to the site. And all that happens was in the development phase, and that's before we release the building permit. And then during the building construction, they're usually not out there until stormwater design goes in or the driveway poor. But we can work with the building side and the inspectors and have them keep an eye and if they notice something, and I think...
So there'll be multiple visits.
Forty-five days from the, from the...
Date of notice would be...
Date of notice.
Of notice or date of ported.
Yeah.
Thank you, Steve.
Save the dog.
For the way it's written.
Thank you, Steve.
She needs a second, Madam Mayor, there is one.
Yes.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Well, did that include the amendment?
Yes.
To the...
Yes. So within 45 days of date of notice.
All right, date of notice.
Okay, good.
All in favor? Unanimous. And that concludes New Business. Thank you very much. Do we have a motion to adjourn to closed session?
To go into closed session. And to remember to add, I'm three to that, it says just six now, but add three and six.
Is there a motion?
I make a motion to go into closed session and add item three?
Yes, pursuant to, under statutes 143, 318, 11A, three and six.
Absolutely.
That's what she said.
Was there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Thank you.
Thank you, Terry.
Don't forget to take these with you. Do not share or discuss, please.
Take it to the gas station.
We are back from closed session, and no action was taken. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Yay.
Thank you, everyone.